Good evening. This, I'll call it an order. The City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, at 5:31 PM. John McNally, our Director of IT, will provide an introduction.
Hello and welcome. I'll be providing assistance to the Mayor and the elected officials during today's meeting. But before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones may have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing the question into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the raise hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
All right. Thank you. First, we will have invocation by Vice Mayor Tye Pensurga, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Justin Katz.
Thank you, Mayor. For those who would like to participate, please join me in bowing your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, in light of all that is happening in our community. We thank you for keeping our families safe and for everything that you have done. We ask for your guidance and wisdom and courage to do the right work for the people. So, thank you, and we continue to do your work. Amen.
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 Commissioner Katz.
I apologize. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tye Pensurga.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus. Is absent. May I have a quorum?
All right. Thank you. Moving forward with Agenda approval, and I have one addition of announcements. D, Eleanor Chrisel will make some presentations regarding, make some presentations. She knows what they are. They have a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know there was a delay. Commissioner Romulus is having trouble logging in, John.
I see her name. There is the attendee, and so we will wait until she gets there to give the date and time that she's, the time that she's present at the meeting. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We'll begin with informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose at this time.
All right. Commissioner Hay?
No disclosures at this time.
All right. Vice Mayor Pensurga?
I believe I made mention of it already, but I'll disclose it again. I did speak with Bradley Miller regarding the two items, Madison Project and Mirror Floor, which is new in today's agenda.
All right. Thank you. For myself, on May 7th, I spoke with Dr. Fanoi, which I was pleased that he was reaching out to the elected leaders and trying to renew a partnership with the City of Boynton Beach to get information out to the public. I wish everyone a wonderful Mother's Day. It was a special day in my house that I got to have my mother and my wife there to celebrate on the 13th. I chaired the Transportation Disadvantaged Locating Board, and I learned some important information regarding transportation needs in the state of Florida. F.D., the Florida Department of Transportation is creating their plan. It is called, you can go to florida-transportationplan.com to be directed to their website so that you can have direct access and letting our transportation department know what you would like to see or what you need in order to be able to get around better here in Florida. And then yesterday, I attended the Q Pod meeting with the other commissioners here and also spoke with Bradley Miller. Is there any further announcements before we move on, or informational items before we move on to announcements? Seeing none, we will have our first announcement proclaim the week of May 17, 2020, as Water Reuse Week. Laura Corey, Regional Representative with South Florida Water Management District will be present to accept the proclamation. And...
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Corey said that she is working on an audio issue at the moment.
Okay. So, let's move on to announce that hurricane season. Hurricane season begins June 1st, and the Solid Waste Division is urging residents to do their part by conducting tree trimming early in preparation for the hurricane season. As a reminder, residents should not do any major tree trimming or place bulk items at the roadside after the announcement of a named storm, as there is no guarantee that vegetation or bulk items will be picked up before a storm arrives. As part of a normal vegetation pickup, residents can place three cubic yards of vegetation weekly to set at the curb the day before their scheduled pickup date. Vegetation needs to be cut in four-foot lengths and in four-inch diameter. The vegetation must be placed at the roadside, leaving three feet around any obstructions such as mailboxes, cars, or recycling bins. Bulk trash and vegetation must be separated for pickup. Any trash or debris mixed in with vegetation will have to be rued by the resident prior to pick up. Large tree stumps and trunks larger than four feet in diameter require special pickup. If you have any questions, you contact the Solid Waste Division at 561-742-6200, Monday through Friday, 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM. All right. And our next announcement?
Excuse me, Mayor. I don't know if anybody else is hearing it, but I'm hearing a high-pitched noise in the background somewhere.
Yeah, that's my dog crying. So...
Somebody want attention.
Yeah.
Wasn't sure what that was.
Yeah, that's that. And then announced the Solid Waste Division will be holding its first Tire Amnesty Week for city residents the week of June 1st, 2020 to June 5th, 2020. Tire Amnesty Week will be held during the week of June 1st through June 5th, 2020. During that week, residents may place at the curb up to eight car and/or passenger tires with or without rims for pickup. Tires will be picked up on scheduled bulk trash day in your neighborhood. Tires must be placed at the edge of the road at least three feet away from your garbage cart and any other fixtures such as telephone poles, mailbox, et cetera. Keep tires away from, keep tires and vegetation separated. If you have any questions, you contact the Solid Waste Division at 561-742-6200, Monday through Friday, 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM. If residents miss the June Tire Amnesty, the Solid Waste Division will hold a second Tire Amnesty Week during the week of November 2nd, 2020 through November 6th, 2020. All right. Now for the, and now we'll move on to Eleanor Chrisel with item D.
I have unmuted Eleanor Chrisel.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Memorial Day is traditionally celebrated on Saturday, the 23rd, at our Boynton Beach Memorial, excuse me, Memorial Park. But due to COVID-19, we have planned the virtual tribute honoring the men and women who died while serving. We are creating a video that will be on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel on Monday, Memorial Day, May 25th, at approximately 2:45. The Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners are invited to email us a short greeting to include. Tom Kreisner provided a photo of himself serving in his military uniform at the age of 17. In addition, St. Joseph's Schools provided photos for inclusion. We are adding another component to this year's Memorial Day celebration. We are distributing 100 American flags at one of our local restaurants, Mission Barbecue. They will be doing their traditional Star Spangled Flag salute outside at 12:00 noon in front of the restaurant. The first 100 patrons will receive a free three-by-five American flag on behalf of the City of Boynton Beach to display on Memorial Day in honor of our fallen heroes. Similar to our postcard distribution at our Centennial Beach Day, we will also be disseminating stamped picture postcards, this one depicting a photograph from a past Centennial Memorial Day and a Centennial calendar. In addition, the water tower will be lit red, white, and blue this holiday weekend. Our email newsletter banner will feature a photo of our Memorial Day from the past and news articles on our activities. The city's website homepage will have a pop-up message celebrating Memorial Day as well. On Facebook and Twitter, Instagram, Next Earth Accounts will also feature a photograph from past Memorial Days. Digital marquees and billboards will be displaying a memorial messaging. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We're moving on to the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors. Whereas although Florida's water supplies are finite, the state's population and need for water resources continue to increase, and water reuse provides a means for conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources and is key to the state's sustainable water future. And whereas Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in Chapters 373 and 403 Florida statutes. And whereas Florida has risen to be the national leader in water reuse, reusing 797 million gallons of reclaimed water per day to conserve freshwater supplies and replenish our rivers, streams, lakes, and aquifers. And whereas Florida's permitted reuse capacity is almost 1.7 billion gallons per day, more than 65% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities. And whereas Water Reuse Florida, the State Section of the Water Reuse Association, has proclaimed the week of May 17, 2020, as Water Reuse Week. And the City of Boynton Beach has joined with Water Reuse Florida, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in the South Florida Water Management District in encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach has implemented a water reuse program and encourages efficient and effective use of reclaimed water. And now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the May 17th to 2020, 2020, as Water Reuse Week. The City of Boynton Beach is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious water resources by practicing efficient and effective use reclaimed water. Crystal, do we have Laura available to speak?
Ms. Corey said that she's having technical issues with the audio, but she did want to give the following message. I can read it.
Yes.
The San Florida Water Management District really appreciates this proclamation and all efforts of the Mayor and the city on water conservation. Reuse is another tool we have to extend our potable water. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to public audience, individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record. John, I'm going to let you handle this with letting me know if anybody would like to speak.
The options have been turned on.
All right. Let's give it 10 seconds, and I'll let my dog out.
Okay. I see a question from Elizabeth Lewis. Elizabeth, you have been unmuted.
Wonderful. I don't think my camera's on, but I don't think you guys need to see me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. I'd love to say that I have gripes and complaints, but I wanted to say thank you to everybody. I'm a real estate broker in East Boynton Beach, and one of my customers has been dealing with a pre-existing code violation that was unknown, and you guys really stepped up to the plate and rushed things along for him, and I can't tell you how amazing it is. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for that. Thanks for going the extra mile, everybody. You too, Mayor Grant.
Thank you.
Okay. The next raised hand is Susan Oyer. Susan, you have been unmuted.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southwest, oh, gosh, I can't talk, 140 Southeast 27th Way, Boynton Beach, Florida. I had the opportunity to go on the webinar today as part of the Sustainability Action Team, and there was a webinar from the regionalconservation.org group. It's the Institute for Regional Conservation, and I would want to put out there that they are offering plant packages that are natives that will help restore our ecosystems. They are five plants for $60 on up, and they are plants you don't normally see, and they have everything from ocean packages that go actually out on the beach, on the beach dune, the coast strand, the hammock region, and butterfly plants, and they are unique and different, and they are specifically to attract our native butterflies with the butterfly plants, which are the least expensive, and you get 20 different coastal butterflies coming to the plants they give you for $60. Or the other plant which are to improve and help our dunes thrive, and the hammocks thrive as well, and the animals that live within those habitats. So, maybe the city should look at doing something like this as, you know, we improve our beaches, or our mangrove parks, or our hammocks, or just town square with the downtown and attracting some of these unique butterflies that I'm always torturing you guys over. So, thank you for taking the time to listen. Specifically, the black bead is the one I've mentioned before, because it's the one that attracts the Miami blue butterfly that is the most endangered insect in North America, according to some of the websites, and that's the one I'm hoping that we can help play a part in restoring in our town square renovations. Thank you for your time.
John, do we have someone, anyone else with a raised hand or a question?
I have one question from Matthew Marzilliano, asking about the, is this time to speak on the 7-Eleven proposal?
No, that will be at public hearing.
Okay. And so I believe that is the last question or hand raised in the interface, so I will disable those options.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. And now, there was another announcement from Eleanor, so if you could allow her microphone to be unmuted.
Just a second. Eleanor, your microphone is self-muted.
All right.
I am unable to...
I've got it.
There she goes.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. In our original presentation of planned Centennial Events, a free play at the links was scheduled for Sunday, June 7th. And our Centennial Fact of the Month is that the golf course was opened on June 7th, 1984. So, we're excited to announce that we can keep this Centennial Event, and I would like to announce the details tonight. Reservations for Sunday, June 7th, will open at May 31st, starting at 7:00 AM online. The first 100 golfers to book a tee time will not be charged to play. The next 200 approximately tee times will be available for $19.20, the celebration of 1920. Similar to the postcards distributed at our Centennial Beach Day and a Memorial Day, we will also be giving out stamped picture postcards, this one depicting the golf course in the past, a Centennial calendar, and a 100-year-in-the-making aluminum water bottle. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're going to be moving on to administrative. All right. We'll be appointing residents to advisory boards. No one has applied. We have opening spots on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Education Youth Advisory Board, the Historic Resource Preservation Board, and the Library Board. Our next item will be consent agenda. Would any of the Commissioners like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving next to consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Would anyone like to remove any of those items from consent bids of over $100,000?
Mayor, 7B, item B.
Okay.
I have a question for staff. I'm not sure who is the best person to answer it, but I would like to have a better understanding of what kind of services are provided with this Motorola contract of $141,502. I see here that it's designated as maintenance and repair of a radio system, and so I'm, you know, just not, not working in a police department myself, just reading what I can read. I naturally can't help but to ask, you know, how often are radios breaking, and what kind of services are we getting for $141,000? How do we, why is that price so high for whatever services that we're getting? So, if somebody could speak to that contract?
Hello, Commissioner. It's Michael Grevery, Police Chief.
Hello, Chief.
Hello. With regard, with regard to the Motorola maintenance contract, as you mentioned, that is for general maintenance and repair services for our radio system and its components. As indicated in the backup material, there's five console systems, which are what the dispatchers and call takers actually sit at to collect the information and dispatch officers on our radio system. There's five repeaters, which are part of that infrastructure, basically antenna systems around the city that receive the radio signal from the handheld radios and increase the signal strength so it can be picked up by our master system. There's a 227 handheld APX 6000 Model 2.5, 85 APX 6000 Model 1.5, 19 APX 4000 handheld radios, 128 APX 6500 mobile radios, and six APX 7500 consolates. I go through the detail there to let you know there's a good amount of equipment that is not just one item that's covered on this maintenance contract. So, it's all of, everything from the handhelds that the officers carry with them where they go, to the actual equipment that's in the communication center the dispatchers talk on the radio system channels with, as well as the infrastructure, the actual antenna on the tower and the components that are necessary to tie all those things together and make them resilient in the event we have an outage of any sort, or any sort of malfunction within the system. Motorola is on call. They do respond out day or night, because obviously we consider the radio system a critical infrastructure for police and fire. It is the lifeline between the, our personnel who are in the field and help when they need it most. So, it is a large number, but it covers a great number, a great amount of pieces of equipment, and it's a life, a public safety asset that belongs to the city.
I understand. Is it the case that we have frequent malfunctions? Is that why it's possibly so high besides, you know, having so many pieces of equipment? Are they, in other words, are they coming out often to maintain and repair?
No, it's not based on frequency. We, they could come out every single day, and our contract would be the same price.
Okay.
The issue is just more of, it's based on the, the type of hardware that we have and the fact that Motorola is the vendor who has to train and keep certified technicians knowledgeable about how to, how to maintain our equipment, and obviously, when things break, we can ship them back to the factory for replacement and repair and so on and so forth with the warranties that we have. They're just expensive items, even though handheld radios cost over $4,000 or $5,000 apiece just for a handheld radio. So, the maintenance on them, on them, as well as the rest of the infrastructure in our network, our radio network, is an expensive item.
And if we have some sort of catastrophe, like a very strong hurricane that damages a lot of these equipment, would that be covered as well in these cases of catastrophes?
With, with most of our contracts, there's, there's a language that refers to force majeure, which basically means act, act of God that we can't control. Those type of things would be excluded. So, if we had a direct lightning strike on a piece of equipment that wouldn't be covered under warranty via, they would replace it, but we'd have to pay for the actual product, the item, and then they, under our maintenance contract, they would replace it and reinstall the new piece.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Chief. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
Another question that I have is, is it on a regular cycle? In other words, do you just buy a bulk number of radios to replace them? What is the lifespan, I guess, of one of those radios on the normal working condition?
The normal, thank you for the question, Commissioner. The normal working conditions are a rugged public safety environment, so they're designed to work in rain and water reconditioned as well as extreme heat. So, it takes a lot to break one. They are, like I said, they consider themselves a military-grade construction of the actual devices, so they can be dropped, they can be, they can fall into a puddle of water. Now, if you drop them in a swimming pool, that's a different story, but they're quite resilient. The, the frequency is, it doesn't, they don't break that often, but they do break particularly, depending on how hard they hit the ground, or an officer is going to struggle or fight with someone, and they get smushed or something, or the screen is cracked, they'll have to go back to the factory for repair. The average life cycle of the equipment is about roughly, I'd say somewhere in that eight-to-10-year lifecycle for a handheld device, and then depending on which component in the system you're referring to, each one has a different lifecycle. But the handhelds are the things that we have the majority of, over 300 handheld components, handheld radios, and their lifecycle is usually in that eight-year lifecycle range.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions from the Commission? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? State so by saying nay. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
A move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing, item 8A. Jim, would you like to read the ordinance 20-011 and 20-012?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance 2011, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as Madison on the Avenue and described herein, owned by Jared Doros and Pure Star LLC, changing the land use designation from local retail commercial to special high-density residential, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance 2012, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to rezonate a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Madison on the Avenue from C2 Neighborhood Commercial to IPUD infill planned unit development, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. These two ordinances go hand-in-hand with the item B on the Agenda 8B, which is the which is the site plan for Madison on the Avenue. Mayor, with the consent of the applicant, we could have a presentation on all three of those items. Item A is legislative in nature. Item B, excuse me, the second ordinance, is quasi judicial as is the site plan.
All right. Thank you so much. Do we have the applicant able to speak?
I have unmuted Mr. Bradley Miller.
Let me ask that anybody who intends to testify in these quasi judicial proceedings swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. When you have the microphone to speak, will you please confirm that you have taken the oath? Thank you.
All right. And I see that Commissioner Romulus is, is with us now. And so I'd like to give the opportunity to disclose any information items before we proceed with these different agenda items.
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to disclose. I did speak with Bradley Miller in regards to these items. That is all I have to disclose. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for joining us. All right, Mr. Miller, you may proceed. And if you would like to reference any of items 8B as well, please do so in your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. This is, I guess, a second for me. We started this with the virtual hearings with P and D for these two projects and whole, whole new process. So I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So I, this first project here is, is called Madison on the Avenue. We're requesting a land use amendment rezoning and site plan, which if it's okay, I would like to present all of that at one time and then address any questions afterwards. Next slide, please. Our site is, you can click three more times. Our, the site here is just west of Federal Highway on Southeast 23rd Avenue, which is the extension of Gulf Road. On the south side of the road, currently the site is, has some older buildings on it that have been used for some medical office, some residential. And the owner here and the applicant Jared Doros has decided to move forward with a residential project that we're presenting tonight. We're surrounded to, by the east by Coastal Bay and to the south by Coastal Bay. And then Kensington Place is another townhouse community to the west. Across the street, across Gulf Road is some older multifamily housing on that side. Next slide, please. So our request here is to change the land use to special high density residential. And the, the slides showing the existing land use on the left side of the slide is what's existing now. You can see that our site that's outlined there in red is surrounded by special high density to the east and to the south of Coastal Bay and medium density residential on the west. And we're proposing to this to go to special high density so it would be consistent with that area. Right now, the existing designation is local retail commercial, which is a little odd for that location, but it's long existing that way and changing it to be more consistent with the residential. You can click twice, please. Again, this is the zoning, the, the request here that we're changing. One more click, please. We're proposing currently, it's the commercial C2 zoning that matches up with the, with the current land use. And we're modifying and proposing the change to the zoning to IPUD, which is consistent with, again, with Coastal Bay to the, to the east and south, as well as Kensington to the west. Next slide, please. Our site plan here, what, what we're proposing are 10 townhomes in two buildings. There's five units each. We have a driveway that's coming off of Gulf Road and then a center court in the middle. The, the, this concept, we, we worked with staff on a couple of different layouts and this was one I think everybody came in favor with, obviously we're presenting it to you tonight, which moves the, the northern building, building number one, up closer to the street, which is following a little bit with the CRA recommendations. This site actually, in the CRA recommendation plan, had identified it for mixed use, but after talking it through with staff, the mixed use idea for such a small parcel of .67 acres really didn't make sense. The density is the same between the two designations. So for the straight residential use, they felt that the special high density was the way to go and with the IPUD zoning. The, the layout here with the driveway through the middle, building one, the northern building, has driveways that lead to a two car garage. All, all 10 units have two car garages and all 10 units have space for two cars behind the garage. So in full parking standpoint, each, each unit has four spaces. So we have, you can see there, we have 40 parking spaces where only 20 are required, but that's because of the garages. The garage spaces are all being wired so they can be accessible for electric cars for the residents coming in, in here. The, the IPUD zoning, you can click one more time, John. The IPUD zoning requires the rec area, which is that southwest corner green space of 200 square feet per unit. We have over the, the 2,000 square feet there. The chart on the bottom right is giving you a breakdown of the sizes of the units. They're, they're nice sized units, all but one are three bedroom, two and a half bath, two story townhouse units. We think it's a, a good market with the proximity to the hospital. And we're, we think it's a, a good market and it fits in well with the surrounding townhouse projects, both to the, the east, south, and, and west. Next slide, please. This is our landscape plan. I always like to show this because, because it looks so busy and it is busy. There's, there's a lot of landscape that's put onto this small site. I, I'm not going to go through it. We do have our, our landscape architect available if there's some questions. But it's a pretty solid plan of landscaping all the way around the perimeter as well as the interior. Next slide, please. This slide is really showing an enlargement. The left side of the screen is the enlargement of the rec area, which is a little passive area. There's a mailbox kiosk there. So, so no one can come at the same time to pick up their mail and violate social distancing. There's a change in planning. You, you create those spaces so people can gather and now we can't gather. Editorial comment. But there's passive areas there with benches and a little pergola area that's for, for the residents to use for some, some outdoor space. The, the, the four squares on the right side are showing the cross sections of the buffers around the perimeter of the site. I will point out that there is a wall, an existing wall along our south property line and east property line. That's part of the Coastal Bay development. And then there's a little bit of a grade change between the two properties, which something that came up in the planning and development board meeting was possibly trying to connect these two, this site with Coastal Bay. But because of that grade change, that's, that's really, yeah, I don't think it'd even be possible to get the grades in there to get that, that to happen, let alone running traffic through Coastal Bay, which I don't think would be desired. Next slide, please. Something else that came up in the planning and development board, and in fact, it's, it's one of their recommended conditions, would be to provide some additional security along the front of the building one. So this is right along the edge of Gulf Road. The blue line, what we've decided to add here between planning and development and, and tonight is a little four foot rail fence that would be right along the sidewalk. The sidewalk would be just to the, the north of the blue line there. And then there would be gates leading from each of the sidewalks into the front doors of all of these units. The picture was, the best I could find in short notice here of the idea. I do want to emphasize that we're not going to have that, that heavy hedge behind it that would really go against TED regulations for security. We don't want people walking through their gates and be surprised on the other side by an untrendly visitor. But we feel like that fence will give some, a little bit of privacy, a little bit of security for each of the residents along that, that road frontage, but still give that proximity to the road and, and the architectural feature. The fence itself is going to be black, contrary to what the photo is showing. And that'll match in, you'll see here in a moment, it'll match with the, the railing that we have on balconies as part of the architect. Next slide, please. So I always like plugging this into the, the presentation of it. It shows how the, the colored site plan fits into the surrounding area. And you can see how the, the townhouses fit together with the, the surrounding development. Next slide, please. We, we have gone through the, the relatively new code and comply and exceed actually the sustainable development standards, which is in your staff report. Next slide, please. Architecturally, these are the elevations. It's using a very contemporary, modern style of architecture, which seems to be the, the market trend. That again was something that we talked about with staff in the early on of, of the, is it a continuation of the Mediterranean style of Coastal Bay and, and Kensington? Or is it better to have some diversity? And the decision was diversity. It also adds to kind of a timeline of when the market is. Those projects are a little older and this is a newer, newer project, obviously. And the, the contemporary style is, is what's trending here in the market. My client has pointed out that this is also a, will be all concrete. The, the flooring in between the roof. So from a hurricane standard standpoint, we feel like this is a, a safer building to be in than some of the pitched roof with tiles that, that can come loose and fly. Next slide, please. This is showing the, the rear building, the, the back building, which in this case, the garages and the pedestrian doors are in the front, all on the same side of the, the building. Where in building one, the first building that I was showing, the garage door would be in the back and your main pedestrian door would be on the north side of the building. So there are different styles, which kind of is nice. You get to kind of choose your, the style that you like. Next slide, please. It's the renderings that really show, show it off. This is giving you a little better feel of what that architecture will look like in reality. This is as you're, as you're driving home into the community. The rec area is, is to the bottom right, part of the slide. And there, that's showing the balconies and the, the rail that's there. I would like to point out that our renderer missed a little bit in the landscaping. He doesn't have all the landscape in here that was shown on that plan that I showed previously. Not sure why, but we didn't quite get it there. But there will be some additional landscaping that, that will comply with the landscape plan as we move forward. This has the, the awnings over a, a good portion of the, the windows. There will be hurricane glass for the windows and the sliders. So it's going to be a very secure building. Next slide, please. The, the front building, which is up along the road, is, is same style, has the, the, the balconies and the rail. And then we do have a, a small monument sign there to welcome everybody home. This is not showing the, the rail fence that we're proposing to include into the, the, the front here along the, the backside of the sidewalk. But I think hopefully you can, you can picture that and I think it will be a nice added feature to the frontage of the roadway and the, the overall project. There's also some flowering, small flowering trees that will kind of offset from the palm trees that run along Gulf Road, Southeast 23rd here. That'll add, add some color and a little more foliage along the frontage of the road. There's also one more tree on the west side of the road. There was, next slide, please. So this is summing up our, oh, can go back. This is just summarizing our application of, again, we're requesting the change of the land use and the zoning to special high density and IPUD respectively. And the master plan that goes with the IPUD. There were the, the, the conditions are fine the way they are. The planning and development board asked us to consider two things, which is the treatment of the, they were looking for more landscape along the front, along, along Southeast 23rd. We think that the landscape is fine, again, considering SEPTED criteria. And we've incorporated the, the, the small rail fence that I think would kind of address what their concerns were, which is giving the owners a little more privacy and separation from, from that, the, the public road and the public sidewalk. The other condition that they were asking for was landscaping on the west side of this building, which with the palms and the one tree that we're missing, that's what we were missing in that, that P and D meeting. We believe that we've got enough landscape along that, that west side. So our, our feeling is that we don't need that second condition from the planning and development department, or planning and development board, sorry, not department. We are, other than that, we're in agreement with the staff report. Again, staff is great working with and getting through this project and we look for your support. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. All right. I asked John to allow any of the attendees to raise their hand or ask a question.
Mayor Grant, that option has been enabled.
All right. Thank you. And if you can just keep it open during the hall, all of public hearing. I'll go through the line. If any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant, then we'll open it up to the public and then we'll make any final remarks and have a vote. So Commissioner Katz, do you have any initial questions or comments?
No questions in particular, just comments. I'm, I'm a big proponent of townhouses. I've, I've lived in townhouses most of my life. They're, they're an efficient way to get people into, into lower cost housing and still maintain the square footage and the garages. I like the style. I like the two stories because they, they adhere to what's, you know, on the adjacent properties. So there, there's no concern that they're dominating or towering over anyone. Just, you know, I appreciate the project and if you drive through Lake Worth or Delray, most of their projects tend to be townhouses because they're, they're great uses of space and they're very attractive to, to different demographics, first time home buyers, people who, who don't want big houses and have to maintain lawns and landscaping. So I'm in favor of the project and I appreciate many of the, the features that have been incorporated into the, the project, such as the electric car charging station and the, the ability to have four cars parked on each property is great. So you can have guests and it's not, you know, overflowing into the streets. So I'm, I'm in favor.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hay, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I'd like to ditto what Commissioner Justin Katz just said. Yes, I'd like to ditto what Commissioner Justin Katz just said, but one question for Bradley, on the conditions of approval, was the landscaping on that side that you were talking about, the only objection in terms of the conditions from the PND board?
Yes, I mean, the wording for the second condition along the front is a little different. It's really asking for landscape. So that one, we may want to modify that to reflect the fence instead of the landscaping. And then the second one from the PND board would be to eliminate that additional landscaping on that, the west facade.
Okay, okay. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Romulus, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, Mayor, just comments in terms of, you know, I definitely like this project, and as we look at the redevelopment that's happening all throughout the city, this again just continues that, that forward momentum. So liking what I'm seeing, and I'm all in favor.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Penserga?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo all of your sentiments. I'm generally a fan of what I'm seeing right now. This is, it's a modern project, and it's, I'm glad that it's here, and I know that it's close to the hospital, so we might be seeing a lot of nurses and other medical professionals living here. I like that all of these units have these electric charging stations. Can you, Bradley, can you verify, did I get that right? All of these units have electric charging stations, or they're wired in?
Yes, all the garages are going to be wired for that option for the residents to use.
I love that. I love that it's white and there's plenty of vegetation, so I will definitely be supporting this project, and the density of this is at least the same, if not less, compared to its neighbors. And I believe it was Justin Katz, Commissioner Katz, who mentioned the height, and that's always important. I do want to publicly praise the PND board because I took the time to listen to their meeting, and I was just so impressed by the questions that they asked and the depth of questions that they asked. So kudos to all of you, and because you did such a great job, you essentially covered 99% of my questions. So thank you to all of you. Thank you, Bradley, for a great presentation.
Thanks.
Mayor?
All right. Yes.
Just a quick question. Yeah, that's me, it's Commissioner Romulus. A quick question for you, Bradley. That last picture that we're on, that's just for aesthetics. We're going to have better, more shade providing trees, yes?
There's, the trees along, this rendering's missing some flowering trees that are going to be in addition to the palms that are along there. So as far as canopy trees, you know, putting in oaks and that type, it gets a little tight to have the building up there, the sidewalk there, a little courtyard space for the residents in the front to get trees like that that are a little more extensive with their root system. So that's why our landscape architect has chosen the plant palette that's along the frontage.
Bradley?
Is there any further?
No, thank you for the clarification.
All right, thank you. And Vice Mayor, did you speak?
Yes, Bradley, I just had a quick question. You said the fencing was new. How far does that fencing go? Is it, does it form a gate into the community, or it's up to the monument sign?
It just goes up to the monument sign. It kind of, there's also a fire hydrant there that we had to wrap around it, so fire had access to it without having to jump over a fence. So it's really from corner of building to corner of building.
Okay.
And then there would be, there's a little pedestrian gate for each of the five pedestrian walkways leading to the units.
All right. Mayor, what were the types of trees you plan on using, Bradley, other than the palms?
Give me a moment, I'll take a look at that and get you the name.
All right, now I'm going to ask the commission to ask, hold on to any other questions or comments until we allow the public to speak. That way, we can all do it in an orderly fashion. So Bradley, do you have an answer?
Not yet.
All right, well.
Come back to that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get that answered.
Thank you. You know, my comment would be is that this is in our CRA, our redevelopment area, and I'm happy to see the redevelopment. These buildings are over 50 years old, and we're changing the land use and the zoning so that we are maximizing the land that we have left in the city of Boynton Beach. I explained to everyone that we only have one 10-acre farm left in the city, where most of the people growing up here remember the cows on Congress. And so with that, we're, you know, using the land that we have wisely. Gulf Road is a special road because it has access over 95 and across the railroad tracks. And so this is definitely a needed project, and hopefully will spur other development in that area. So thank you. And now I'm going to open it up to the public if they have any questions or comments.
And this is John. I just reversed the presentation slides back to the slides that have the trees for Mr. Miller.
All right, thank you. But we'll move on to the public, and then we'll go back to the commission for any final comments before we have a vote on the first reading.
I have one.
Can I hire John for any further presentations to find the slide that I really need?
I'm sorry?
Bradley, what did you say?
Jokes don't work as well virtually.
No, they do not.
Never mind.
Okay. I'm the straight guy.
I didn't get that all, but okay.
Okay, Mayor Grant, I do have Susan Oyer, who has raised her hand, and I have just unmuted her audio.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. Yes, Jim, I swore in. Sitting on the PND board, we did, to discuss the two conditions, I think everyone would be fine with the fence in the front. The first condition was that we do something about the security. And Bradley, I've got to say, I love the idea of putting that fence in, since this was my condition and my idea. The second condition that came up to address Commissioner Hay was, and I believe Vice Mayor Penserga was on the west side of the building, the reason, someone else on the board had asked to have more landscaping put in was, if you go back to that rendering, you'll see it's just a big blank wall, and we were wanting to have the people headed east on 23rd to not have to look at a big blank wall with just a couple tall palm tree trunks with some palm fronds up at the top, but to have something to fill in that wall space. And that was our reasoning behind wanting something more. I understand why Bradley's not going forward with that, but that was our reasoning behind it, so the eastbound traffic aren't looking at something just empty and blank. So I just wanted to give that input in case you had a chance to listen to the PND meeting minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we have a question. Is that from earlier?
Mayor Grant, that is from earlier relating to 7-Eleven proposal. I have no other hands raised and no other questions to address.
All right, thank you. You know, as for the applicant's request, you know, I understand that there's so much space available in this project, because I'm sure if there was, if there was a possibility to put 11 townhomes, you would. And I think the landscaping is sufficient, so the PND conditions on the west side and north side, I think the applicant has met all of the landscaping conditions. And so now I'll go in reverse. Vice Mayor, do you have any last comments or questions before we go to a vote?
None.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, she's still muted. We'll move on to Commissioner Hay.
No.
All right. And Commissioner Katz?
Just that I appreciate the project, and as everyone else conveyed, I think it's a good use of the land, and I look forward to it.
All right. If there's no further comments, may I have a motion to approve of proposed ordinance number 20-011?
So moved.
Second. I got it. Thank you. I got it moved by Commissioner Hay, second by Commissioner Katz. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Commissioner Romulus said, I don't think we got an answer from you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Vote is five of.
Thank you. We're moving on to proposed ordinance number 20-012, first reading. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Penserga.
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is five of.
Thank you. I may have a motion to table item 8B to the next meeting.
We'll move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Jim, would you mind reading ordinance number 20-013 and 20-014?
20-013, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for the property commonly known as mirror floor apartments and described herein, owned by Seacrest Properties LLC, changing the land use designation from medium-density residential to high-density residential, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance 2014, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 20-0213 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as mirror floor apartments from R3 multifamily residential to IPUD infill planning and development, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. The last two items are quasi-judicial. Anybody who intends to testify needs to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please confirm when you do speak that you took the oath.
All right. Thank you. And do we have the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here again, Mayor Bradley Miller with Miller Land Planning. I don't know if I actually got that in the record last time.
I thought you moved your, changed title. You still, it's still Miller Land Planning?
I did, and I, and thanks for giving me that opportunity. I think these are the last two projects that I will be presenting after 23 years of Miller Land Planning. But not leaving Boynton Beach, we're staying right where we are in our existing building with the existing staff and are excited to join with Urban Design Studio, that's been a fantastic planning and landscape architecture company in West Palm Beach since 1977. So it's exciting. We're getting to do this transition with a virus, which is a little interesting, but it's going well. But thanks, thanks for the little PSA opportunity.
My pleasure, and if you'd like to speak towards item 8D as well, please do so.
I would. I will, I'll present all these together again. I see we missed on the numbers here on our screen, but it is 8C and 8D of the agenda. This is mirror floor apartments. This project, you can, next slide, John, please, thank you. This site has a little history. This goes back to 2006, 2007, where I was involved in a different owner, and this was a surplus property of the cemetery. My client at the time entered into an agreement with the cemetery to annex the parcel into the city. We changed the land use, changed the zoning to the city designations, and got approval for a 40-unit townhouse development. If you picked up on the dates, that was the beginning of not-so-good times and recession, as well as, I think, as you look back, it's always easier to look back. But I think the product that was proposed and approved at the time was a little big and a little expensive for the area and the market for that area. And so to fast-forward ahead here, we are proposing to move forward with the rezoning, land use change, and site plan as well, to go to 58 units, which allows for some of that cost and the market rates to be spread across a greater number, and gives a basis that's much easier to rent and be more compatible with the market for that area. I'll say upfront, it's recognized that we've got some marketing challenges here with the cemetery on the one side, I-95 to the west. We're certainly aware of some of the activity that's to the east of us, but we're staying optimistic and feel like a new project here may give some revitalization to an area that could use it. This is, next slide, John, thank you. And one more time. So similar to what I showed before, the left side of the screen is the existing land use, which is a medium-density residential category of 11 units an acre, and we're proposing to increase that to a high-density residential designation. One more click. So the high-density residential is a 15-unit-per-acre designation, which will allow us to get to the 58 units. And again, that north property line is actually the north boundary of the city of Boynton Beach. The memorial park is actually in unincorporated Palm Beach County. Next slide. From a zoning standpoint, again, we're utilizing the IPUD zoning, rezoning it from, one more click, please, from the R3 to IPUD. And the infill PUD criteria is, for both of these projects really, are, is really suited for this, where you can see we have a kind of oddly configured property, and it allows us some flexibility, some design flexibility to utilize and come up with a good design that fits into the property. At the same time, there's some offsets for that in that we have to provide, there's a requirement of rec, it's not a voluntary thing, but a requirement of recreational space within the community, which I'll show you here in a moment. Next slide, please. So this is our site plan. We've got the single driveway coming off of Seacrest, which is off the right side of the screen. The little S-curve as you come in was actually something that the county dictated for us. They said you needed to align with Mentone Boulevard on the east side of the street. At first, it was like, oh, boy, are we going to be able to get that in there? But now I think I like it, gives a little character, so you're not just coming directly into the project. The green area- The green areas on both sides of the entry drive there is drainage areas, as well as landscape buffering around the perimeter. And, and the same on the very western side of the property, the left side of the screen, there's also a drainage area on that side where it's a budding I-95. The project has five buildings that are all consisting of two and three-story buildings. The, the portions of the buildings that have the crosshatch in them are two-story. And then the units that are interior to the buildings are, are three-story. They're, they're walk-up units. Another click, please, John. Actually, two clicks. So out of this, we get 58 total units. There's a mix that you can see there of 25 two-bedroom, two-bath, and 33 three-bedroom, two-bath. Again, we have sufficient parking. In fact, we have a, an excess of parking. And just to explain that, when we were going through the review, your, your staff recognized that with three-bedroom units and a parking rate of, of two spaces per unit, in a three-bedroom unit, there is that opportunity of having a husband, a wife, and a teenager with everybody having a car. So working with your staff, we felt it was better to have a few extra parking spaces to, to accommodate that. We still comply with the rec areas. You can see there's two rec areas that are centered into the property with, with the buildings. The parking circulation allows for both garbage and emergency vehicles to completely circulate through the site. We have a pedestrian walkway that goes throughout the, the entire property and then connects all the way out to Seacrest, where there's an existing bus stop. And as a condition of approval here, we're providing a covering for that bus stop to help keep people out of the, the elements. The landscaping, we've got landscaping completely around the, the entire perimeter. We've, we've beefed up on the landscaping. There's a, a landscape material on that south property line, which I can try to pronounce. But the idea of it is with, working with, with, again, with the staff, it's called a Awabuki Viburnum. So I'm, I'm expecting everybody to immediately get that picture of what that is. But the, the verbal part of it is that it's a thick hedge to provide from screening to Pine Point Villas, who are neighbors to, to the south. So we gave some focus to, to that buffer. It's 10 feet wide. The requirement of a buffer is five feet wide. There's an electrical overhead line in that area, so we do have some trees in there, but they're, they're the trees that are allowed by FPL to, to be within that, that area. Our nearest building to any of the units is to the south. The Pine Point is about 70 feet away. And then given that two-story to three-story type of architecture, the building kind of slopes away from a, a line of sight from, from the south to the north. Along the north property line, we, we were contacted by the owners of the cemetery, and they wanted to know what, what our landscape buffer was along that north line. We have, at the end here, I'm going to read into a condition that we've worked out with them to be able to address their, their concerns. They were mainly just looking for what is the, the barrier, what's the, the screening between this project and the cemetery to the north. There are some grave sites that are actually pretty close to these property lines, so that kind of eliminated the opportunity for walls that would require footers. So there is a six-foot aluminum rail fence that goes along that entire north property line. And then there's a cocoa plum hedge that is going to be planted in with that. The condition that I'll read in is allowing that hedge to grow up to be six feet high and be maintained at six feet high. So there's that vegetative screen in between. We also felt like a landscape hedge would be a much better candidate there than a wall that we felt had a great opportunity for potential graffiti, which is not a, not as pleasant of a site at all. Next slide, please. To zoom in to the site plan a little bit more, some of this I've already gone over, the, the dried attention areas on both the, the west and east sides, the bus shelter. We do have an area where there's our mailbox kiosk. It's at the very south end of the building five, which is on the right-hand side. One of the units of that building, the, the lower level unit of that building is actually going to be an office space that will be used for, can be allowed for the community to have, have meetings there and, and a manager type of situation for that office space. We do have different stations. We have three different stations that could accommodate two cars each for electrical charging stations throughout the project. We've got bike racks, that, the, the rec areas, we've got the sidewalk system. So we've, we've come a long way. Our first plan were, was a road down the middle with buildings on each side. So again, giving kudos to your staff and, and being able to come up with a, a much better design for this that, that addressed all of the criteria and all of the, the concerns and a, a much better community setting for, for the residents. The two rec areas, the, the eastern rec area on the right side, the, the idea there is to have that as more of a passive area where there's a pavilion. There could be some barbecue grills there, a little quieter. The, the western side on the left is more, a little more activity where there's a tot lot for, for the children. A, a comment that came up, and again, a condition from the Planning and Development Board, was to consider adding a basketball court. There is a little bit of some difference on the Planning and Development Board of whether that's a basketball court might be an invitation of, of people who don't live in the community to come there and, and gather, which I think would be a detriment. So I, I think the, the basketball court is not a good, not a, a great idea. But we could look at some, maybe some shifting some of those amenities around and, and being able to have some multipurpose, just play area, open field area in one of those rec areas that could accommodate soccer, kickball, or or just, just an area for, for running and, and giving, I think the concern of the PND board was having some activity for the, the middle school age children. And I think that playfield could, could be that opportunity. Next slide, please. This is zooming in on, on those rec areas. My description got ahead of the slide, so we'll continue on. Again, the landscape plan, and I'll use the, the same line before, the, the busyness. There's, there's a lot of plant material on this site that's incorporated into the open space areas and throughout the parking lot, providing a lot of greenery along, around the perimeter. This is very solid landscaping throughout. Next slide, please. This is showing the, the landscaping along that south property line where Commissioner Hay, there, there's the plant material that, that we're proposing. The, the tree is this Placa Holly, which is something that FPL allows in proximity to their power lines. And then we've got the, the hedge, and there is a, a chain link fence that's existing right now. That's part of Pine Point Villas. They have a hedge there already, and then we're adding to it. So it's, it's going to be a, a pretty thick hedge along that south property line. Next slide, please. This again is showing the, how the project fits, fits into the area, gives you a breakdown of the, the units and the spaces and the parking. And you can see that our recreational space is again exceeding the, the minimum requirement, which is a nice amenity for the community. Next slide, please. Architecturally, this is showing the, how the, the end units on, on the left and right sides are two-story, and then the interior units are, are three-story. They are walk-up. Right in the middle of the building, on the bottom part of the slide, there's the, the slatted areas. That's a staircase that's in that area, and we have the, the Bahama shutters that cover openings there, so it gives that architectural style. The influence here was High Ridge Landings, which is over off a High Ridge Road, close to Copper Point. And if we go the next slide, it'll add some color to these. And it's using those pastels, which is a very sustainable colors with the lighter roof colors and the, the railings that will complement the architecture. Next slide, please. Just to give you some rendering, some perspectives, this is a little bit of a bird's eye. It's, it's hard to get the view because that first building is actually set off the road quite a bit because of the entry and because of the configuration of the site with the cemetery. But this is, you can go to the next slide, John, and, and kind of go through them slowly. This just gives you different perspectives. This is looking from the southeast to the northwest, how it relates to Pine Point Villas on the south side and the cemetery to the north. And again, that's kind of zoomed out a little bit. We can go one more. And lastly, I think it's, lastly. Yeah, this does give you the, the street view perspective. Can go back one, John. So the, the hedge that you see there is actually the cemetery's hedge along the road, and then the one just behind it is also their, their hedge. We won't be adding any until you get south of the driveway to landscape buffering, but there will be the, the buffering on, on the backside adjacent to the building. I'll point out that the, the buildings here, as they butt up against the cemetery property, there's no rear patios, so those are just windows on that backside. So that was done intentionally to, to keep the, the activity, the access to the, the buildings internal to the project and away from the perimeter property lines. One more slide. So this again is a summary. We're, we're proposing to the future land use. Actually, there's an error there. Didn't catch that one. We're not asking for the special high density, but high density residential, the rezoning to IPUD and the master plan with conditions. I will add to that, the condition that I spoke about, that we've arranged with the cemetery, and I, I did agree with them that, that I would read this into the record. So it is part of the record. I've already provided it to your staff here this afternoon, so it is part of the file as well. But this would be an additional condition that says pursuant to the proposed site plan and landscape planting plan, a five-foot-wide landscape buffer shall be installed along the entire length of the north property line where adjacent to the existing cemetery. The buffer shall consist of the following materials as a barrier. Six-foot-high black aluminum rail fence as shown on the landscape planting plan, a red-tip cocoa plum hedge installed as shown on the landscape plan with three-gallon plants, approximately two feet in height and two feet on center to create a continuous hedge. The hedge shall be allowed to grow and will be maintained at a height of six feet. Pakahachi grass as shown on the landscape planting plan, and trees and palms, including gumbo limbo, live oak, and cabbage palm. So if that could be added into, to your motion. So with that, I'll close. I know I'm not sure if there is some public, but I would like to reserve some time if there is some public comment to address anything that might come up. Thank you.
Thank you. So John, can you allow the, the public to raise their hand or ask any questions? And.
Option is, is still enabled. I have one question that was asked. Let me pull that up.
Nope, not yet. We're going to go with the, the commission first.
Okay.
And I will start with Commissioner Hay. Do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
Yes, I saw him as he was explaining himself. I think I, some of my answers, but the, on the entrance, that property that does the little dip there belongs to cemetery people?
The little notch area?
Did you ever negotiate to, to, to get, to buy that land to take that, that boundary straight out to the street? I guess they want to keep that property.
Well, the reason that there's that notch there is because there's grave sites, existing grave sites in that area.
Ah, okay. Say no more.
All right.
And the hedge, the hedge would be a six, six feet high. And no, I, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Romulus?
Mayor, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. No questions. Again, I usually am very pleased with the product and the work that Bradley and, and his staff bring forward to us and then the work that he gives to his clients. And I, I, I think being the fact that he's been in the city for so long and he's worked with our staff over just the years, it, it's almost just like easy watching him work and, and seeing the product that he turns out. And, you know, I, I'm speaking from, from, you know, the, the years I've been watching and seeing things and listening to interactions with staff, so to, to me, again, this all just seems a project that will continue to move us forward. I, I do understand that there's several members of the public that, you know, may not necessarily agree with, with the project that's being built. But, but I, I believe with the product that, that is available and, and the individuals that it will, you know, attract and, and bring into the community as we expect growth to come, this is simply just preempting that and, and preparing for it. You know, having a graveyard as a neighbor is not necessarily always, you know, the most ideal a situation, but they've made the best with, with that situation. So I, I think this is commendable. So I am in full support of the, of the project.
Thank you. As for me, I kind of want to speak to the, the commission about one of the requests that I'd like to make. As you know, I'm on the, the Transportation Planning Agency, and I was looking at the, the road of Seacrest in between Gateway and Hypaluxo. I saw that there is actually, there's one crossing that the county has not maintained on Northwest 28th Avenue and Ocean Parkway. And so I'd like the, the applicant to apply to the county to see if we can get a signalized pedestrian crossing at that intersection because they required the roads to match up with Mentone Road and the entrance. Currently on Seacrest, it is a suicide lane, and I think that name it bodes well when anyone's trying to cross those five lanes anywhere in the city of Boynton Beach and that unincorporated area. And so it's not a necessarily. Uh, and so it's not a necessarily a requirement if the county does not deem it a requirement. But I'd still like the applicant to make that request so that we have it on record if the county does not deem it require, uh, necessary at this time. But uh, you know, as you, as most people can see that north of Gateway, it's a residential neighborhood. You know, I I'm very happy that they're gonna do the enhanced bus stop. It's on the route seventy that goes in between, uh, Long Seacrest from Delray up to uh, Lan- uh, Hypolux- uh, Lantan, I believe. And that way we'll have more transportation needs for the those individuals, plus uh, they're still technically within walking distance for to Hypoluxo and Seacrest and those different restaurants. So that's a, one of the conditions on approval is to uh, have the applicant request a pedestrian crossing at that location. And Commissioner Katz, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, so one, I I have no objection. I support uh, the effort you're making there with the crossing. Um, and I guess a a question for Mr. Miller, if he can answer it, what's the do you know what the current land value is for that property and and potentially what the projected land value is as a result of the development?
I do not.
Okay, do you know, um, do you know the the total estimated cost of the development, the investment? Ballpark?
They're anticipating the entire project to be um, around twelve to thirteen million dollars.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to kind of, to see if I could get any of those numbers out just to to show that you know, that this is some, this land has been vacant for some time. And I think like you said, when you started your presentation, you kind of you prefaced the presentation that there might be people who are skeptical that, you know, a project like this in this area has demand or would make sense, but I think it it will have demand and it does make sense because a lot has been going on in the the general vicinity um, in north, North Seacrest, in between uh, Boynton Beach Boulevard, all the way up to Gateway and then further north, so I I appreciate the investment in the community. I appreciate the the belief that that this is a property that will be successful and and I don't have any objections to to what's been presented.
Alright, thank you. And so now, I'll open it up to uh, the public. Yes.
I just wanted to make a few comments about this.
Well, I'm gonna, oh, did I forget you, Vice Mayor? I'm sorry.
Unless you called me and I zoned out, it's possible.
No, it's alright, no. Go ahead, right ahead.
Well, uh, thank you Bradley for your presentation. First of all, Mayor, I I do support your request as well. Regarding that, I don't know where, um, you know, where exactly the school bus stop will be. Um, but if it is across the street, I would be extremely concerned. And so all the more reason that we should have them at least apply and and see what's possible in terms of a crosswalk. I I can imagine there being lots of kids in this community. Bradley, I regarding the southern hedge, uh, separating this from the Pine Point Villas from the diagrams, it looks like there's actually two sets of hedges. Is that right?
There is. There's, there's an existing hedge that's actually part of Pine Point Villas that's probably we're, we're adding on to that, yes.
Okay, that's good to hear. So just some general comments. I I like that you pushed the buildings as far away as possible uh, from Pine Point. I like the hedges that you have you put in, that second layer. I appreciate that there are electric cars charging stations. Uh, and one of the comments that was mentioned, two comments from the P and D meeting that I want to just circle back to. One, I understand that these are rental units. Now, I understand that ultimately this is all dependent on the market. But is there an option for people to maybe rent and then eventually own these units? Is that something that's that's in in discussion with your client?
That's always an interesting question. From a technical standpoint, what our request is for is fifty-eight multifamily residential units. Code really doesn't address rental versus ownership. That's a market condition. But these, these units are are constructed in a way where if down the road, if the condo ownership if that was the the market, uh, at that time, uh, they could be converted. But initially here, we feel it's a rental market.
Okay, and I get it. You know, ultimately, the market is the market and you have to work with it, so. Um, and the other topic that was mentioned in the P and D meeting was that, again, many families with many kids of various ages. And I see that you have like, uh, some sort of playground equipment there in the left portion. And then somebody had brought up that what about older children, uh, whether it be young teens? Uh, do they have a space for them? And I think that's really important because I'd rather, and I believe it was Susan who mentioned this, I'd rather that they are doing something constructive, whether it's basketball or soccer or or whatever it may be in their community uh, than doing something else. Is there any options for, and I I just want to propose this and see if anybody else is interested, but instead of having, I think that's a gazebo on the other side, is it possible to combine that so there is a larger, open, green space, I'll call it a flex space. So this way, you know, if there are teens that want to play soccer, for example, uh, then they have a large green area that could be used for that or for any other type of event. I just wanted to see if there was any appetite from the board to create kind of like a open green space where it's flexible use. Not necessarily just a playground in the middle, but could be a, could be a soccer field, could be whatever it may be.
We, we did look at that. If I can give some input there, and uh, what we could, what we could do is um we're, we're not overly keen on the idea of a basketball court, even a, a, a full-size court's not gonna fit. A half-court, I did lay it out, it's really tight. And you end up with the, an urban park that's paved over as opposed to the greenery, which I think is gonna uh, add to the uh, aesthetics to the project. Um, so I think what we could do is we could, we could combine the totlot and the the pavilion area into one rec area and leave the other one open as a, as a multipurpose flex type of uh, opportunity where somebody wanted to uh, put some soccer goals out there, you know, of their own and and have that available. And I think that does uh, work, work in well still with the um, the middle-aged, uh, middle school-age children to be able to have that opportunity. So that's, that's something that we could, uh, we could certainly, um, you know, shuffle some of that around. Keep the same amount of of rec area that we have there. Um, and uh, but kind of reutilize it and give that opportunity for a, for a playfield.
Fantastic. Um, my last comment will be that, given that this is adjacent to a cemetery, I'd just like to ask that you know, if there is a service happening at some certain time of the day that your client and all the construction workers be mindful of that and take a pause for the duration of the service. I don't, I would, I I certainly wouldn't appreciate it if I was burying my loved one, for example, and there was all these jackhammers and whatever noises there are. So just, it's something I'd like to ask your client and uh, to be respectful of uh, any services that may be going on.
Understood. He's uh, listening with open ears. I keep getting text messages, so I know he's listening, so. So uh, it, that's, uh, you know, not to make light of it. I think that that is a uh, a conversation with our neighbor with the cemetery where there's communication, uh, while that's going on to to not disrupt, um, one over the other.
Right, right. Fantastic. Yep, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And so now, John, if we have any questions or raised hands?
Mayor Grant, I'm looking at the board and I do not see any hands raised. Um, there was a question posted. It's not exactly related to this.
And so, so I'm gonna ask you to remind me to uh, speak on to that question after public hearing.
Okay, now there is uh, a raised hand. It is Joseph Krajewski. I apologize if I did not pronounce your name correctly, but you have been unmuted.
Mr. Krajewski?
Yes, this is Kathleen.
Hi Kathleen.
This is Kathleen. Hi, this is Kathleen Krajewski and um, I believe I have to indicate that um, I took the L.
And your address for the record.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Two twenty-one. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
You're, you're a little in and out.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you much better.
Thank you. Okay, um, address is two twenty-one Bayview Avenue, Unit B in Pine Point Villa. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for the presentation. Uh, I do have some comments that I would like to make as a resident of Pine Point. Majority of our population, probably seventy-five percent, is greater than seventy years of age. We purchased our homes um, because we wanted an adult community and not be subjected to the noise and activity that comes with families. And I feel that um, our community was not taken into consideration at all with the planning of this because of the proximity to our condos on the south side. I would suggest that, further suggest to the commission that meetings, a meeting where in-person comments can be made would be better suited for our type of community because of the average age group. I understand right now that there is a virus that is procluding that um, type of activity, so I am respectfully requesting that the commission postpone any decisions on this site until the residents of this community, who many of which are computer illiterate, many of which may be hearing impaired, can then attend in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen, for your comments. Alright, John, do we have any other questions or comments?
Uh, currently, Mayor, we do not.
Alright. And so, we will, we'll go back and you know, as for your, your comments, Kathleen, I understand um, the, the whole situation regarding uh, a development built to your north that is not fifty-five older, being built next to a fifty-five and older. Um, I think the applicant has done everything that they are required to do and more so, um, for your protection. You know, the, the fact is, is that there's a lot of noise coming from ninety-five all day, every day. And I think that any noise from kids screaming or yelling outside, if they are even allowed to go outside is going to get muted down a little bit because of the, this surrounding noise from the highway. And this is a, a big development for the city on a vacant lot that I think is going to add a lot of value. Um, part of it is that they have to pay the, the park fee. And so this is something that we may look into adding some sort of park or facilities to the, the rosemary scrub that is close by. And, or figure out something else that we can do so that uh, the kids there can find another place to play uh, rather than uh, the apartment complex. Um, as for Bradley and the, the rest of the commission, I want to thank you for um, allowing that uh, request as a condition of approval to ask the county to have uh, a signalized crossing uh, at that location for uh, the bus or any sort of uh, school stop. And so that is all, all my questions and comments, and I will go to Commissioner Hay and then down the list. Yes?
I just want to make it clear that the, the, your condition of approval was just for the applicant to apply, not necessarily approve. That, that's out of his hands, so I want to make sure that's clear. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So if the, the county says that, hey, we're not even thinking about doing it, that's one thing. And if the county does do that, then that's a conversation with the, the city and the applicant to see if it's possible for us to work together, to get that taken care of.
If I could ask, uh, just for clarification too, just to make sure it's clear, and it, and I think I do understand you're talking about pedestrian uh, as opposed to a vehicular signal. Uh, I can tell you, a vehicular signal, there's not enough of the warrants uh, at that location. But a, as far as uh, we are gonna have to go to the county for a driveway permit uh, to make that connection, so we can, uh, through that process, uh, we'll have this condition of approval where we can have that conversation with the county about uh, about having uh, the pedestrian crossing uh, at that location.
Alright, thank you so much.
Your staff.
Alright.
This mayor, just one of the quick, quickie by me. Uh, I, I, I know Bradley, you, you, you've probably already done your homework as usual. But I was thinking about a garbage truck making that little sharp turn, uh, coming off of uh, Seacrest there and then make another sharp turn. It, it was, was that taken under consideration of you guys put that little curve in there, that little S curve?
It most certainly was. Uh, if it, if you zoom into the site plan, there's little dashed lines, kinda uh, curved, curved lines throughout the entire community that's showing the inside and the outside radiuses that are needed not only for, for trash vehicles, but also for uh, emergency vehicles, including the large fire truck. So all, all of that was taken into consideration and reviewed by your staff.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have Commissioner Romulus.
Mayor, I have no comments. I've, I've said most of what I need to say and all of my answers have been questioned or questions have been answered. I am good. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Vice Mayor, do you have any further questions or comments?
No further comments. I think Bradley's done a great job and um, I'm very excited for this.
Alright, and Commissioner Katz?
Um, no more comments at this time.
Alright, thank you. If there's no more comments from the board, may I have a, a motion to approve?
Second.
Alright, and I should have asked earlier that the additional conditional request is part of your, your motion, Commissioner Hay?
Yes, yes, it is.
Alright, thank you. Now, and that was for the ordinance number twenty dash zero one three, uh, first reading. So may I have a roll call, please?
Can I make one clarification before you take a roll call? Uh, there is a condition from the Planning and Development Board about suggesting the basketball court. Um, do you wanna, I know that's part of the site plan, so I guess it would come at second reading. But uh, I guess I just want to clarify that to maybe reword that to to reconfigure the rec areas.
So Bradley, thank you. Um, do you, would you be able to provide us with a, another slide of the, the options that the applicant is willing uh, to go with for the, the rec area?
Sure, we, we can do that and we can uh, work with your staff on coming up with a revised condition of approval to, to implement that between now and the next reading.
Yep, alright, thank you. Alright, no further comments. Uh, may I have that roll call for ordinance number twenty dash zero one three?
Commissioner Katz?
I'm here. Uh, yes, sorry.
Commissioner Romulus?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Frisera?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
All right, may I have a motion on ordinance number twenty dash zero one four?
Go move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Hi.
Commissioner Romulus?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Friselda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kat?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
All right, then may I have a motion to table item eight D to our next meeting?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Jim, would you mind reading proposal ordinance number twenty dash zero one five?
You're welcome. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving amendments to the comprehensive plan utilities element to include an update to the ten-year water supply facilities work plan, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
All right. May I have a a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right, does staff have a a presentation?
Yes.
All right, would you like to make the the presentation, please?
Hi, this is Michael Low, Deputy Director Utilities. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Have we got the slide there, John, please?
Yeah, I'm I'm loading that right now.
Thank you. Just as a background while he's loading that slide, South Florida Water Management District made an update to the southeast water supply plan, which was promulgated in January of last year. It puts a burden upon us to immediately review our ten-year water supply plan. We lasted that five years ago. So even though it's a ten-year plan, they tend to go into five-year reviews. And this is the result of that view. Can I have the next slide, please? So we are presenting this to you today, following your approval at first reading today. It will actually be sent to the Department of Economic Opportunity in Tallahassee for their subsequent review. This has already been seen by the South Florida Water Management District, and we have responded to their request for information. Next slide, please. This just gives you an outline of the utility service area, and the hash line is actually the city outline of the city. Approximately just over a third of the population we serve actually lives outside the confines of the city of Boynton Beach. The next slide, please. The first thing that they do within the plan is to look at population. This is the more detailed projections for Boynton Beach Utilities itself. Obviously, we're in the year twenty twenty, and we estimate our population of one hundred and sixteen thousand six fifty-three. You'll see that we've added the tiny of hyperloxo into the numbers from the the southeast plan because they don't incorporate them until twenty twenty-five, although we are scheduled to take on the remaining parts of hyperloxo this coming September when they leave the Manalapan District and come over to us. If I go to the next slide, the important relevance there is to see how we stack up with the other larger utilities and our neighbors. And you'll notice that very soon we actually overtake Oka Raton, and we'll stay ahead of them. Where population is, we get closer to Delray Beach, sorry, to West Palm Beach. Delray Beach is a much smaller utility, as you can see. And if you look at the West, at the Palm Beach County Utility, you can see this massive increase in population that's anticipated in our area. The next slide, please. This should be, these numbers are in million gallons per day. Sorry, the the next slide has it correctly. It's just not shown here. We look at two different numbers. One, if I could just go back, John, sorry. We look at our average daily consumption, which is one hundred and thirty-one gallons per capita, against the maximum daily flow which we've had, which is one hundred and fifty-four gallons ahead of population served. And so in two thousand and sixteen, we were down at fourteen point one million gallons a day. We're over fifteen now and anticipated to go up to eighteen on an average day. Significance of that is, from planning purposes, do we have sufficient water within our consumptive use permit? So if we go to the next slide, that will show in a lot more detail the impact of population and average consumption and where we are in terms of, you look at the right-hand column, whether we have a surplus against our consumptive use permit versus what we anticipate our demand to be. From all users or our wellfields, we got six and a half million gallons from our eastern wellfield. That's been curtailed to stop saltwater intrusion from the ocean as the oceans rise. The western wellfield, which we now tap for the east plant as well as the west plant, has fourteen point three six million gallons of capacity per day. And we actually own, we bought a few years back, a million gallons of capacity from the Palm Beach County Utility. We only have to pay for it. We 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 paid the cap fee, but we only pay usage when we actually open up any of the interconnects. We have a total capacity there which we can take in of five million gallons a day. So the good news from this to report is that we have sufficient water going forward based upon these fairly aggressive, this isn't the most aggressive population projection, but this is what they're suggesting as we continue the development within our service area. And next slide, I believe, is is any questions?
All right, thank you very much. I'll I'll begin with, one of the other questions is, is that, does the utility department looking to expand to other areas in the next five to ten years as well?
We're continuing to 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 look at that. We have had recent, a few years back, we had discussions with the Manalapan District. They, for the time being, have decided they wanted to stay as they were as a separate entity. We're also looking at more of the mobile home parks that have their own water supply. There's a couple more that are showing interest. When it gets more concrete, obviously, we come to you, but there are a few more people. We will actually be filing an amendment to our consumptive use permit to bring onboard those parts like hyperloxo that have come into our usage recently.
All right, excellent. And so I don't know for the rest of the board, but I feel that this is something that we should help encourage staff to to go see and to explore other options to expand our water utility. It is a way that we actually, it is an enterprise fund, so we bring revenue into the city, which means that we do require less taxes from our residents and businesses. So I'm in a favor for this. I believe Commissioner Romulus, you're up next. If you have any questions or comments? And I see you're up there.
None, Mayor, no questions. I'm here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, any questions or comments?
Yes, I just, I just, just a few. Michael, you mentioned saltwater intrusion into the eastern wellfield. Could you tell us what the future of the eastern wellfield looks like? Is that?
Oh, Vice Mayor, we've taken some action already, actually. In the last few years, we have done what's called an opcoining analysis to look at the impact of saltwater, the lower levels of the aquifer, and we've raised the wells in the eastern wellfield. We've also closed down some of the, or reduced the demand from some of the wells closer to the ocean so that we're tending to rely more upon wells closer to the E four canal system because they're more readily replenished from there.
The western field.
In the eastern field, we have up by Lowe's, we have a wellfield there, have the wellfield by the ballfield itself. And then there's one up by the school, Forest Park Elementary. Those are all further west from the ocean than the one than the water plant itself. And they've are more prolific and they're they're better served by the aquifer. We do have monitoring wells as well, just to check. As a severe drought, we reduce what we're pulling.
Thank you. Michael, you also showed a table there of daily consumption volumes. Where do we rate relative to other cities with our daily consumption?
That's a very interesting question. We're quite proud of that.
Assuming assuming equal population, of course, you have to normalize it.
Right. The the numbers they show are consumption, daily consumption per capita, were under half of the consumption in Boca Raton. And we are, I think, Delray's almost double. I'd have to pull up the exact numbers. But we have one of the lowest per capita consumptions of certainly of any of the large utilities. So it it.
What do you attribute that?
Sorry?
What do you attribute that to?
Very aggressive changes after the two thousand and seven, eight drought period. At that time, our average consumption was over sixteen million gallons a day. We have reduced the usage of water for irrigation extensively and promoted a lot of water-saving ideas with people. And we're also, of course, expanding our use of reuse.
Thank you. I I will reach out to you and and the others privately. I think this is just very interesting because if you're saying that relative to our neighboring cities, we're using half as much of the water that they're consuming, assuming a normalized population, I think whatever policies are in place, that's that's really worth focusing on and and perhaps duplicating in other locations. But well, thank you so much, Michael. Appreciate all the input.
Thank you, Vice.
All right, and now Commissioner Katz?
No questions at this time.
All right, and Commissioner Hay?
Mike, you were saying that we are on the downside, well, half as much as Delray and others. But you predicted in the next few years, we'll be going up to from fourteen to about eighteen per per person or whatever. And what do you attribute that to again?
Just the population growth, Commissioner. Yeah, let's stop. Okay, okay. No, no, no further question.
All right. And seeing how the board commissioners had an opportunity to speak, I'll open it up to public comments. John, do we have any raising their hands or asking questions on this item?
There are currently no raised hands or questions posted on this item.
All right, so seeing none, I'll ask the the commission if they have any further comments. Please make them now. Otherwise, may I have a motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash zero one five?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no more further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm sorry, that's a roll call.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friselda?
Aye.
Commissioner Kat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Vote is five oh.
All right, thank you. Now we're moving on to item eight F and eight G. May I have a motion to remove item eight G from the the table?
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Jim, do you mind reading the the two ordinances?
Thank you, Mayor. Just by way of reminder, these four items were before the Commission for a quasi-judicial hearing at the last City Commission meeting. That quasi-judicial hearing concluded. So the items, the first two ordinances are before you for second and final reading. Therefore, they're public hearings. The conditional use and site plan modifications are also shown as public hearings as well. Ordinance two thousand zero zero five. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance eighty-nine thirty-eight by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as seven-eleven property and described here and owned by Southland Corporation, changing the land use designation from low-density and medium-density residential and local retail commercial to local retail commercial, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance twenty dash zero zero six, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance oh-two oh-one-three to rezone a parcel of land described here and commonly referred to as seven-eleven property from R one A, single-family residential district, R two, single and two-family residential district, and C two, neighborhood commercial to C two, commercial, neighborhood commercial, providing conflict severability and an effective date.
All right, thank you. Do we have the the applicant here?
You do, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. Brian Seymour Gunster, seven-seven-seven South Flagler Drive, Suite five hundred, East West Palm Beach, Florida, three-three-four oh-one. I am the attorney for the applicant, and I have taken the oath. As Mr. Chairop noted, we presented a significant amount of evidence on these applications during your last meeting. I don't think we're going to do that again unless you really want to spend another couple of hours together. But it's it is the record, as I understand it, since it had been tabled. There are a couple of changes to the site plan that we wanted to raise that came, one is a result of discussions with Palm Beach County and the other as a result of some discussions with the neighbors and some comments that you heard about access. So the the first is access off of Seacrest. Since your last meeting, we met with the Access Committee for Palm Beach County. The county controls the access points on both Wolbright and Seacrest. They had a concern, the county did, about a left-in for folks traveling north on Seacrest into the site. We worked with them to accommodate for that, and we've agreed to install controlled access, which would be a right-in, right-out only at the access point on Seacrest. This will demand a couple of site plan changes. We are working through the final design with the county. What we're going to put, what's commonly referred to as a peanut in, which is some curbing that will keep people from being able to make a left and will allow only the right-in and the right-out. Once we work out that final design with the county, we'll update the site plan and present it to your staff. So what we'd like tonight is we request that a motion to approve include a condition that the Seacrest access will be amended on the site plan to reflect the final agreement with Palm Beach County. In this way, we can get that final site plan to staff. We don't have to bring everything back to you. And since the county controls that access permit anyway, we thought that would make sense. The other change is, if you recall, and if if we can throw up slide seven, it might help. We did have the slideshow. The seventh slide on that actually shows the specific location of what we're talking about here. It's the the site plan. Let's see, where are we going?
Right there.
Is that one?
One more click.
One more click. That's it. So that shows the peanut roughly, the where the, so you can get a sense of the peanut. And then on the north side of the property, there was previously proposed a pedestrian access. That was a concern for the neighbors who are immediately to the north. We've agreed to shut that down. What it would mean is extending the wall to cover that area. But because there's a fire hydrant on the other side, we've worked with the fire department to allow for some facility in the wall, which would be designed in the the final permitting so that a fire hose could get through, if need be, to the fire hydrant on the other side of the wall. I understand the fire department, and we've worked with staff, and everybody's on board. So in that case, So in that case, we would propose an additional condition to the one I also mentioned, that the site plan be amended so that the pedestrian access at the northwest be removed, but that access for fire hose as to approved by the fire department be provided. And that will allow, that is a cute dog. That will allow us to work with your staff, just like we are with the county, to get the final design done in a way that makes sense. Again, we happy to go through all the great details, but I think if you have any questions that that you have or any comments, we've got our team here. Josh is here to answer any site planning questions. Neil is here if there are any questions about the environmental issues. Brandon Wolf from seven eleven and Shane Lake Blackso from Creighton are also on the call. So I can get you to the right people if I'm not the right person to answer.
All right. You know, Brian, I would like you just to, you know, to basically recap what you're asking with the the two ordinances.
So we are asking for land use change and zoning changes on two properties that are currently residential to commercial to allow for the expansion of the seven eleven onto those properties and putting the convenience store element onto those properties. And those, I think, are the two ordinances. And then the two resolutions are the the site plan and conditional use.
Correct. All right. That was my question. Thank you. And so I'm going to go down the list for the the commissioners, starting with our vice mayor. If you have any questions or comments or would like the the presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. In the previous meeting, there were concerns from the residents as well as the attorney representing the competing gas station across the street, Shell, who frequently brought up the concern that there may be an excess of benzene vapors that would poison the community. And so I just wanted to address that today because I know that is an area of concern for the residents and it's brought a lot of fear. And it needs to be addressed. So number one, I want to make sure that the residents are aware that the gas station across the street, a gas station that is next to residential, has hired a lawyer to oppose the construction of a gas station next to a residential. I think that's number one. It's an elephant in the room. Number two, a lot of residents called and emailed and said that they received this mailer. And I couldn't help but to wonder, this mailer with some skull and bones scaring people. I couldn't help but to wonder where this mailer came from. And so it's come to my attention that that also originated from the competing gas station across the street. You know, what this is about, it's about competition and competition is a good thing. It's ultimately going to lower gas prices. But the concerns that this may have health concerns for the residents, I want to specifically address the research paper that was mentioned numerous times because if you don't read thoroughly or even the first few sentences, you might be convinced to think that there is something ghastly wrong with the situation. So I took the time after our last meeting to actually read that paper. And I'm not going to talk about the whole thing. I just want to highlight three main points that I think is extremely concerning and everybody should know about. So that paper that was cited by the attorney representing the Shell, that is called, that's titled Vent Pipe Emissions From Storage Tanks At Gas Stations: Implications For Setback Distances. The number one point that I want to make sure that everyone understands is that if you had made the effort to just Google this, whoever was pushing this forward, you would notice that the third sentence, the third sentence, okay? No jargon, no technical words. The third sentence of the paper that says that what they measured was vapors, okay, not benzene, vapors at two gas stations. You know, this is really important because the reality is, if you keep that in mind, we don't make decisions based on two recordings. Two gas stations across the country, we don't know what kind of gas stations, where they were, and so forth. We cannot base any conclusions on two recordings from two gas stations. That's number one. The second is what they actually measured, and it wasn't actually benzene. What they measured was was vapors coming out from these exhaust pipes. Is benzene part of it? Yes. But do we know what they measured? Well, we do because they admittedly say that they did not measure benzene at all. So if that's the case, if they didn't measure benzene, how can they claim about the health hazards of the surrounding community? Well, what they did was they ran a computer model. And so no actual benzene was measured, just a computer model, assuming things like no buildings around it, no trees, no walls, nothing, so as if air would travel directly across right into your homes. And obviously, that's just not representative of reality. And the third and final point I want to make about this paper that's being pushed around and scaring the community. And really, if anybody else, you know, feels the same way as I do, I think we've, we're just fed up with the fear mongering. But if you look at who wrote this paper. So when you look up a research paper, there's a list of authors. And just, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, I expect not. But the last person on that list of authors of a scientific study, that last person is the one who is the architect of the study. They may not have done all the work. They didn't do all the data collection, but they designed it and they they are the architect of the study. I couldn't help but notice that there is a massive financial conflict here because the problem that this paper poses is that you have these benzene vapors, right? Which they didn't even actually measure. And what they measured was just vapors, vapor flow from two gas stations. That's the problem that it presents. Interestingly, the architect of this paper owns a company called Aris. And the product, the number one product that Aris sells is the solution to this problem. So I'm not going to make any claims except that these are the facts and they admit that financial conflict in the paper. So to everyone that's concerned, please, please, keep this in mind. Number one, vapor rates were measured from two gas stations. We can't make any conclusions from two. Second point, no actual benzene was measured. And number three, if you are to believe this paper outright, someone benefits significantly financially from this because they are the architect of the paper that sells the product that is the solution to the problem. So it just unnerves me, Mayor, that, you know, we have a situation where somebody doesn't want competition and their solution is to scare the neighborhood. I'm, I, it's not something that I will tolerate. And I think the applicant has done more than enough to accommodate a code and and all of the concerns. Now, having said all of this, I I want to spend time thinking about the concerns of the residents instead of the concerns of someone who doesn't want competition. And I respect the concerns of the residents. And so I would like to ask the applicant if it's possible for you to simply just move these exhaust pipes further away from the residence and, you know, possibly closer to Woolbright. And this way, they'll be even further away, and that should help alleviate any additional concerns from that. So is that something that would that would be possible with you, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I believe so. What I'd like to do, if Brandon Wolf can speak to that, it has to do with the tanks and some other things that may resolve. And and I understand it may mean some changes to landscaping, but we can work through all that with staff if, from an operational perspective, Brandon tells us that that can work.
Yeah, Brandon Wolf, twenty one West Fee Avenue, Melbourne, Florida. I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Vice Mayor, yes, that's not a problem. We can relocate that on the site plan. And I'll have my engineer work on that. That's not an issue at all.
So if, just to be clear, to move it further away from the residence and closer to Woolbright, is that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is it possible for maybe some of that landscaping to cover this, so it's not an eyesore either? I don't know how tall this is exactly, so I assume that the height of that varies.
So I would, I would suggest that Josh might be able to answer that question a little bit. But I think that after he does, so I've just gone off the talk again, we could certainly agree to a third condition that says to work with staff to move it, to move the vent closer to Woolbright and utilize landscaping as much as reasonable to screen the event.
Right.
So Josh, is that something we can do?
Yes, that that's something we can do. This is, I'm sorry, Josh Long for the record, seven 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 South Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach, Florida. I have been sworn in. Brian, yes, we can move that fuel vent over to the essentially the corner of Woolbright and Seacrest. We'll have to let the engineer look at the area they need. Once the engineer determines that, we can work with landscape architect to ensure that the screening is as, you know, significant as as we can possibly make it and still comply with what the engineer needs. But we we do do this all the time with these seven elevens where we have them on corners and they are well landscaped, so pedestrians don't notice them.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much, gentlemen. I appreciate your time. I think this is a wonderful compromise. Again, I don't believe there are any actual evidence to support that there is an, you know, a health concern given the distance and all the landscaping and the wall and so forth. But I appreciate this compromise, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and we'll move on to Commissioner Katz.
No further comment at this time. Vice Mayor Penzerga addressed my biggest concern, which had been voiced by the adjacent residential property owner with regards to the vent.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hay.
I have no further question, just a comment. I really would like to commend my fellow Commissioner Ty Pennsano for doing the the research, reading the paper and coming up with the things that I had questions about. And you answered them, and I believe them, and I concur with what you said. So with that, no further question. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Romulus.
All I have to say is it definitely feels good to have a fellow science geek on board here.
Very proud of that.
So thank you, Vice Mayor, for really just taking time to deep dive into that information to to really just get the, get fact from fiction and really make sure that we can separate that and and help remove a lot of the emotion and fear out of this conversation. It's it's really important and it was significantly relevant. I do appreciate that. So again, I I am in favor of this project and it is time that we help improve this corner here on Woolbright and Seacrest.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Now I'll ask for the the public if they have any questions or would like to raise their hand to speak. Now would be the time to do that. We will go with everyone who has their their hand raised. And I believe we will start with Matthew Marsagialano.
I, whoops.
Yeah, I clicked it too. You got it.
Yes. Okay. Yes, you are unmuted and able to speak, Matthew.
Hi, Matthew Marsagialano, one twenty two Southwest Fourteenth Ave, Boynton Beach, Florida, three three four three five. And yes, I, did you guys do this? I was sworn in. You've actually addressed two of the 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 most pressing concerns that I had brought up to you, to the council regarding the pass through in in the vent pipe, and I certainly appreciate that. Regarding the the study that was going around, my information didn't come from the flyer. I've done my own research and I I recognize the weakness of that particular study with a sample of two stations across a nation. I also, you know, recognize, now that you've pointed out their specific methodology, there are some weaknesses there and the conflict of interest. However, according to the EPA, the CDC, and the World Health Organization, gas stations are a known source of benzene emissions. So that's a given. Also, if you look at what that study was doing, is they were evaluating the these emissions against the the state of California's estimates for benzene emissions in regards to setbacks. And the state of California has a three hundred foot setback. So there's not a question of benzene being emitted from gas stations, and there's no question about benzene being a carcinogen. It's a question of we're putting a gas station in, we're disregarding our own setbacks. I know you've pointed out that we've had several gas stations throughout the the city, throughout the county that are adjacent to residential. We have several gas stations that there are two, three, four of them on a corner. One of the things the advisory board pointed out is we have never put a new gas station directly against residential. This is going to be a first. All of these gas stations, this, 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 they're grandfathered in from sixty, seventy years ago. You know, these these corners that have three, four, five gas stations, they're they're corners like Congress and Boynton Beach Boulevard. They're major, major intersections. You know, so this, this is going to be a different type of situation. And, yeah.
Wow, we have four agreed on something?
Excuse me.
Sorry. My son, my son is much like the mayor's dog, and I was trying to get rid of him.
You know, so so this, this, these aren't necessarily apples to apples comparisons, you know? Saying that we we have gas stations next to residential neighborhoods is like saying, well, sixty years ago, we built buildings with asbestos. Let's build one, let's build a new building with asbestos. We we know this is a bad idea. My my objection again, I'll I'll say it again, it's not to the, it's it's not to the site plan, the footprint. It's specifically the gas station aspect of this. You know, so that's, that's where it at. You know, I I don't think that the the health concerns can be just entirely tossed because of one bad study. When, you know, the the state of California, in their own estimates, admit benzene emissions. You know, all of these governmental agencies do, and I'm sure at some point when we city of Boynton Beach was setting their setback regulations, they took into consideration safety and health benefits and how close a gas station should be to residential neighborhood. So that's my primary objection to the project. That being said, you know, I you know, if this is going forward, you you have addressed two of the the strongest mitigating factors. Now, I would also like, especially since my house is like, I'm I'm twenty feet from the dumpster and their loading zone. If there's something that could be done to mitigate rodent intrusion in that area, a fully enclosed dumpster or I don't know what technology is available, I'm sure the guys doing the site plan do. You know, and I I guess the last thing is, is, you know, I have a little bit of concern about their delivery times and and trucks. You know, if if you have a truck backing up at three AM with a backup siren at a hundred and twelve decibels, which which is a typical level for backup alarms, you know, and I'm trying to sleep thirty, forty feet away from this, it's going to be highly disruptive, not only to me, I mean, even the neighbors that are directly across the street. They're they're only, you know, seventy five, a hundred feet away. So if there's some sort of limitation to delivery hours or things that would cause that kind of disruption. And then the last is just a suggestion that if this is going in, I had spoken to the seven eleven reps. I had spoken to both Josh and and Shane and asked them about the security cameras. And they had indicated these are all going to be inward facing. and they had indicated these are all going to be inward facing. There are, they're not going to be anything on the outside pointing onto the roads, at least not on 14th. So, you know, one of the council members had suggested that, you know, could we tie in the cameras to the, to the police station?
Right.
If we, if we could have at least one camera on the outside wall looking at that, that 14th Ave. corner, or going, you know, looking from the westernmost corner facing east so that you can see if there's anyone ordering there, if anyone's stopping their cars there, if, you know, and had that tied into the police station, that, that would greatly alleviate my concerns for crime on that corner. And, you know, that, that's kind of it. I mean, I, my gut feeling is this is probably something that's going to go forward regardless of my concerns, but if we can do what, you know, some of these suggestions, which, you know, I know some of them have been, you know, it'd be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, our next person with their hand raised is Bill DeVries.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. I'm Bill DeVries. I live at 130 Southwest 13th Avenue, of course, Boynton Beach, Florida. I just want to first start, I have no skin in the game about Shell or anything, I just live on Southwest 13th Avenue, so I'm only a block away. I do remember the Shell station when that was, when it was adopted, we'll say, because there was a small service station there, and the commissioners couldn't fight it, they had to let that Shell station come in. So the community never wanted that Shell station. So I just want to let you know, I have nothing, them fighting probably was the worst thing we could do, but either way, we'll just move on from that, just for the record. The thing that I'm concerned about is not the fumes necessarily, is the closeness of the 7-11 to Southwest 14th Ave. Because what people's going to do, the primary thing is the traffic's going to be a nightmare. A lot of people are going to come off I-95, and I'm assuming you guys, you're smart and you figured this out, they're going to come off I-95, have to go eat, and they're going to have to make a left-hand turn. And what they're going to do is come through our community, all the little side streets like by the fruit stand and the one before that, they're going to be coming through the neighborhood and using Southwest 14th as the back road to 7-11. And in the morning, you've got traffic going down there, you're going to have kids going to school at the same time, and that's going to be a 24/7 thing. So I'm just hoping all you commissioners realize what you are really doing to our community. If it's what you want, you're leaving us out. That's my personal opinion. My concern was putting these fuel tanks in the ground, and I know that was concerned with the aquifer so close that when they put those tanks, when they're going to dig the hole, water's going to probably come up from the ground. And when they make the retention pit for the tank, I want that to be understood, and you can have your, you know, art, you know, the people who deal with that kind of stuff, make sure the study is that the water table's low enough for them to do what they need to do. I don't think there should be a gas station there. I understand that 7-11 needs to be upgraded, definitely. I mean, we all understand that, but the gas station point of it and to sell those two, those two homes there and change it to commercial for that, just to accommodate their gas station, I think is a mistake, and I, quite frankly, I think it's going to, you're going to regret it. I really do. That's my comments, I probably have more, but I'm just off my cuff. I'm just a regular guy. I appreciate everything and keep up the good work and keep our community in your thoughts. I appreciate it. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Now we have a hand raised from Susan Oyer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I'm not going to talk long, I just want to ask you to do the same thing I asked you last time, and that's bifurcate this project. You've heard from a lot of people, not the one or two that the commissioner said, oh, only one or two spoke last time. No, you're hearing repeatedly, people don't want the gas, they do want the improved 7-11. So I'm going to once again remind you that you have the ability to bifurcate this and to please do that, and to please, please, please improve the 7-11 and expand it and make it beautiful and useful, but do not put in the gas pumps. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you. All right. And I believe everyone who wants to speak has already spoken. And so now we'll wait one more second. Nope, no new speakers. So.
Mayor Grant, there is another hand raised, it might be the same gentleman from before?
It is the same gentleman before, and, you know, our policy is not to let people to come back up to the podium after they finish speaking. So I'm sorry, Matthew, but you had your opportunity to speak, I gave you as much time as you needed, and that's it. Next, we'll move on to the commission for any final comments or questions. I'll begin. So let me unmute Brian, just to mute him. All right, Brian, are you there?
I am, and my son is not.
Okay, no worries, it happens. One of the things that I was looking up, and I guess I have to ask Jim, is that I was looking at the city's alcohol sales code, and according to our ordinance, section 3-4, it's alcohol sales are only allowed from two, are not allowed from 2 to 7. And so I wanted to speak to Jim about that, so that I know that you said you wouldn't sell from 2 to 6, but our current code says you cannot sell from 2 to 7, except New Year's Day.
We would certainly meet code.
Okay. So that's kind of where I wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you. And, and that's, that's kind of it. You know, I understand that we as a government, we don't get to tell private property owners really what to do with their property, we get to tell them what they can or can't. And, you know, the situation is, is that we don't have that option to say that they have to put the, redo the convenience store and they can't do the gas station. That's not what government can do. We can allow them to do what they're requesting, and we get the benefit of the enhanced convenience store along with the gas stations. That does provide security when there's a hurricane coming and all of the gas stations are out of gas, which has happened quite often in the past few years. So I understand that this is a major intersection and that, you know, the city is redoing the, its land use. That's what we saw earlier in today's meeting where commercial properties are moving into high-density residential so that we are maximizing the space within the city. You know, taking away those two duplexes to expand the commercial lot, that's kind of what we are going to see along the south side of Southwest 13th Avenue, because that's what we as the commission decided that, hey, in order to have commercial along a major road, we need to make it more than one lot deep. So I'm in favor of this, and I request the commission to approve with the conditions of approval. As stated, I think the Vice Mayor, you, you've already spoken, but would you like to lead off one more time before we close for a vote?
Sure. I'll just close by saying that competition is a good thing. It will ultimately lower these surrounding gas prices, and everybody will benefit from that. Also, I heard one of the residents say that, you know, this decision is being made regardless of their input, and I just want to say that I don't think that's true. I made sure to read your emails, and, and I think we all did, we read your emails and we listened to all the residents. In fact, the fact that we made some of these changes was to accommodate as best as we legally could the concerns of the residents. So it's not regardless of, of your opinion, it is with your opinion. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Commissioner Katz.
No further comment at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hay.
No further comment.
Commissioner Romulus.
Not at this time, Mayor.
All right. Seeing no more comments from the commission, may have a motion to approve ordinance number 20-005.
So moved.
Seeing no further discussion, may have a roll call, please.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pennslerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vote is 5-0.
Thank you. May have a motion on ordinance number 20-006.
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved.
I got you, Commissioner Hay has a second.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Pennslerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. And next is the request for the conditional use of major site plan modification for Southland Corp., Southland Corp. to allow redevelopment of an existing convenience store for a new 3,454 square foot convenience store, gas pump island consisting of six pump stations under a 3,096 square foot canopy, related site amenities, improvements on a 1.05 acre parcel located at 101 West Wilbright Road, zoned C3 commercial community. Jim, is there anything else we need to say for the, the site plan?
There were a couple of suggestions regarding amendment that should be incorporated.
Do you want to go through those?
I think it would be sufficient if the motion just included to incorporate the comments made by, by council in the presentation for subsequent review of the site plan.
All right. May have that motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Oh, wow, everybody.
There might be a lag in the connection there.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. May, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Mayor, those conditions will be incorporated when staff prepares the development order and before the development order is issued.
All right.
If there are any questions, Jim, let me know. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next, we have proposed ordinance number 20-010, second reading.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances, entitled Municipal Police Officers' Retirement Trust Fund, amending Section 18164 to provide for mutual consent regarding use of the 185 money and an increase in the member contributions, amending Section 18165 definition of beneficiary to allow for payment of lump sum benefits to a trust, amending Section 18169 to add a normal retirement benefit for police officers hired after October 1, 2019, and add a maximum pension benefit, amending Section 18169E to reflect the new benefit for police officers hired after October 1, 2019, amending Section 18174 to comply with new federal Secure Act amending Section 1, excuse me, Section 18175 Deferred Retirement Option Plan to provide that members hired after October 1, 2019 will be, will are, will are subject to Section 18300 of the city code for the terms of the drop plan and to provide that the process for distribution of the drop in the event of death to the drop participant for the balance and account and establishing a priority distribution in the event there is no designated beneficiary, providing for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. All right. May have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, may have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pennslerga?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. Thank you. For items I and J, we've received another request to table to June 16th. I think we, this will be the last one I ask before we move forward or move on, and so may have that motion to table to June 16th for items I, 8I and 8J.
So moved.
I got moved by Romulus and second by Commissioner Hay. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, Lori, we're on to city manager. Oh, there was one question that I wanted to answer by Kelly Hook. It's, you know, this is, I'm assuming for a public audience, the question was, how can we help HOAs in our 55 and older communities not be liable for COVID-19 if pools are open? How can we change this? Rule 720. You know, the, the situation regarding a homeowners association is that you have your own Board of Directors, similar to the commission here, that is elected by that HOA, and so I know that some HOAs are moving forward with allowing the pools and some are not. And that is something that if you do not want to be held responsible, that you have everyone use the pool, sign an indemnification or assumption of risk, and you make sure that you have insurance that covers all other things regarding that. So now we'll move on to the city manager's report, the status of the new monument signed at Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at the last meeting, you asked us what the status of the project was, and we got rained out yesterday, but the foundation did get poured today, and the monument is complete. So right now, the timeframe is, we hope to have it actually installed by the, by the close of this week. Lakewood Monument said they just needed a couple days, once the foundation's set, to come in and put it in. So as far as we know, it should be in by Friday, and then we're, we're hoping to be able to plan a nice little unveiling of some sort for Mr. Kaiser, once we get this installed.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Is there any further questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our second item, discuss the July 4 festivities for 2020.
Yes, we laid out, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Ready for me?
No, I was, yeah, I am ready for you.
Okay. We, we've laid out a few options to consider, obviously with COVID, whether, you know, it's unlikely that, well, to hold a large-scale event like we typically do at the Intercoastal Park, where we get thousands of people to attend our 4th of July, that is obviously something we probably will not be doing this year, and want to just get some feedback from you on what you think you would like to do, if anything, if we want to perhaps postpone the event and work on something maybe for Labor Day, if we think we might be closer to being able to do something with, with crowds, cancel the event altogether. You know, we wanted to just kind of get some feedback from you. Eleanor is prepared to talk a little bit about, she's been in very close contact with the Florida Festival and Events Association, and they've been, these have been large topics of discussion with many, with all the cities, on what are we going to do? Some cities, I think, Lantana is going to go ahead and shoot their fireworks up in the, up in the air from Bicentennial Park, but not allow anybody in the parks. Lantana is going to go ahead and shoot their fireworks up in the up in the air from Bicentennial Park, but not allow any anybody in the parks to attend it in any any kind of crowd. I think that'd be kind of difficult for us and really put put a burden on PD to try to manage something like that. If we if we did that, I think we will be facing some issues with managing people wanting to naturally come and see that. So we just wanted to kind of get your thoughts. If if you would like to hear, Eleanor did get does have a little bit of data on what some other people are doing. And and a couple ideas of what we might want to look at between now and perhaps the end of the year. So if if Eleanor, you, John, can you unmute Eleanor?
Eleanor has been unmuted.
Thank you.
One of the reasons why we need to discuss this is that the contracts that we do have, we need to let the our vendor know.
Vendor know.
Tonight, but we 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 do not have an option to table. We have to make a decision whether we're going to have July fourth on that Saturday or we're going to have another fireworks display at another time, or we use that money for another purpose.
Correct.
So Eleanor?
I hadn't planned a presentation of any sort, but on the backup that Lori provided in the agenda, as we stated, I have been in contact with you know, local, regional, and national, as well as worldwide organizations regarding, everyone is typically in the same boat that we are right now. Our fireworks company was very lenient and allowing us to have an extension until today. So I do believe today that we owe that to them. We're in a five year contract with them, and they have been outstanding to give them an answer whether we will be having a fireworks display in our city. Again, on the backup, I just described that it's very hard to compare cities because we have an event that's in a very small, compact area. And when you're looking at fireworks, everybody's moving to the seawall, and it's going to be literally impossible to have an event there and practice social distancing. Some cities are doing drive ups, but they have massive areas, and it requires, of course, a lot of police, as Lori said, and I do understand in talking with the police that this is one of the holidays that is one of the busiest for them along with New Year's Eve. So it is is a holiday that they have to have a large number of road patrol on. And of course, I've talked to fire regarding COVID situation. So staff, as said in the letter, is not a proponent of having the fireworks display. So we're really looking for some feedback from the commission, and if you have any questions regarding specifics of that, I'll be happy to answer.
So, yeah, Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Sure. Thank you very much. Personally, I'm in favor of of stashing the money money and and reserving it for fireworks at some later date. You know, no one knows when this exactly is gonna it's going to get to a place where we could have mass gatherings, but after everybody's been pent up or unable to participate in any type of event like this for, you know, four, six, eight months, who knows when it'll end. You know, I think that everyone will be in the mood to celebrate if if it went a vaccine is developed and and people can get much more comfortably gather. You know, we we could pair it with another event, whether it's around Christmas time, if it's safe, or or after that, I just I know that it's money that can't be spent right now. But that doesn't mean we can't take that pent up demand for activity when we're allowed to have it and and do something of our own design to celebrate America in whatever month to make up for missing this this celebration of Fourth of July. So that's kind of that's where I'm at. You know, I don't want to jump the gun and and say, let's spend it elsewhere because I I'd like to do something to celebrate America, and even if that's, you know, on December tenth or June thirtieth or whatever, you know, I'm a proponent of that.
All right.
December tenth is my birthday, so that would be wonderful.
We couldn't afford all the fireworks that we have to do for your birthday.
Oh.
For each one. Yo, my my comments is, I remember, I think, two thousand seventeen, we had it on July second because that was the Saturday that made it easy for staff. And so, you know, having the Fourth of July on a Saturday, you know, makes it so that we're going to have record crowds if we did have an event. The problem is, is that you know, it's scary with the the disease that we are facing right now. It is contagious, and we hear stories on both sides where people don't get sick and people do get sick. And as what we've done, the reason why we closed down Barney Bashers, we aired on the side of caution to protect the the residents. And so we didn't have a government function party. The the problem that I see is that one of the reasons why the government does this is so that we do not have amateurs lighting off their own fireworks. And I feel that that is going to be an issue if the city doesn't do something. The problem is, is that we do not have a a big enough location to really do something. The only really location that I can think of is the the Boynton Beach Mall that has that much concrete that's in the middle of the air city that has parking available and that you could go to all the different commercial locations to hopefully see some of the fireworks. But that's not our property, and we don't have that vote. And so I can't honestly say that we should put people in harm's way in order to celebrate a holiday. And so that's kind of where I'm in favor of, you know, postponing it and trying to work with the mall property so that we can have an event whether it's, you know, in July or August, so that it is meant for our residents that are here full year to see about having a firework display that similar to what other people may have done on July fourth in other areas. So that's, those are my comments. I'm going to go next to Commissioner Hay.
My comment, I guess I'm old school, and I like fireworks on Fourth of July. And if it can't happen on Fourth of July, then I think we need to postpone it to some other time. And based on the cost of sixty two thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. We could use those funds for something else, but but also have something, whether it be Labor Day or some other time. I think we could have something on a smaller scale, like e- either the fireworks or or a light show, some kind of laser light show. But look into the possibility of having something in a town square on a smaller scale. I think everybody will understand the reason why, based on what we're going through now, to have something on a smaller scale. And it would not cost us the total pot that we have allocated now. So I guess where I am right now is just to postpone this event to another date in the future, and that when that would be would be negotiable based on exploring this a little bit further. But I do feel we sort of owe it to our citizens to have some kind of celebration. Because I know for the every year, I and I still do, and I'm I'm a grown man, look forward to that time of the year and that that celebration. It's something that we as a city give back to our citizens fun time, enjoyment, coming together other than what what we're coming together for now. So not to repeat myself, but I'm I'm for postponing it to a later date. That's where I am.
All right. Commissioner Romulus?
Absolutely. I'm in favor of postponing it.
All right. And then Vice Mayor?
I'm in I'm in the same same boat here, and I completely agree that we should postpone. I think organizing a large scale event right now is ill advised, and I think we really do need to wait and see if there is a second wave or spike. And so we need to make our decisions based on that. But absolutely, we need to celebrate America, and we just have to do it at the right time. Mayor, I also like your idea about having it possibly at the mall because the reality is, let's say, five months from now or six, seven, eight months from now, people will not feel all that comfortable in my, I think, being out in large crowds. And so that space would allow people to be there, but they could stay in their cars. I think that might be more a good compromise. Eleanor, I did have a question. I just wanted to know if it's even possible to do that because I know that the fireworks are on a barge. Do you know if our vendor allows us to move that off the barge and into something else?
There's.
We have had several meetings with him remotely. Some of them concerning having them in town square, perhaps very small, as Commissioner Hay indicated, off of our new town square or cultural center or all of them. Maybe a light show, something like that. There are areas, the only regulation that we have is that the public would have to be sixty feet from any even small fireworks show. So that gives a little bit of limited space around the town square area. As far as the mall goes, yes, as I was explaining to Mayor Grant the other day, though, if you have a fireworks show that you want the public to see from a distance outside that fireworks show, those shoots or those fireworks have to be higher, much, much higher than we have at the Intercoastal. The the higher that a shoot goes, the more costly it is. So there could could be some additional cost to having it at a location where you're not eye level. They can, yes, do it at a mall, but just note that that would be a large, you know, perimeter around it. And unless we shoot those fireworks higher, then only the people around in those cars can see that. We we have done those in West Palm and do be, you know, you have to be very careful with the cars. We we did get a couple lawsuits with the convertibles and these falling on cars that damaged roofs and things like that. So the perimeter would have to be worked out with police how far. And then I just caution also that once you advertise Commissioner Pincirga an event like that, you are going to have people. If we say, okay, we can fit four hundred cars in the mall, you're going to have them lined up along Old Boynton, lined up on Federal Highway and walking to that event. So again, it would require an extensive amount of police control and protection.
Okay. Thank you, Eleanor. I think clearly we've entered a new world. But let's keep, let's keep the discussion going because obviously we need to find a solution, and we can't not not celebrate it, right? So well, thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Yep. And Commissioner Hay, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I was going to say basically what Eleanor was saying about you know, shooting those fireworks up in the at the mall in the parking lot because when they had that barge out there, I noticed sometime when they shoot them up, they fall all the way down, all the way back to the water. And so we need to be careful of of that.
Good point. Yeah.
Yeah. And and we got, we got to be careful of that. So I think I've seen it on 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 YouTube and all that kind of stuff. They have some fantastic laser shows that would be, I think, just about just as effective. That's something that we may want to look into. And I I'm sure it will probably be less than what we pay for the fireworks, but it's a it's another option that we have to 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 look into. So that would be my suggestion.
On that note, Commissioner Hay and staff, please correct me, but I think we've already spent the money, right? And we're just waiting to give them a date. Is that how it works? Or we've not actually allocated the money?
No, we are fortunate to be in a five year agreement with San Valley. The agreement was written with several levels of payment, so we could choose and pick what we wanted per fireworks show per year. So there are several options we can do. They do contract out a third party for some light shows. I can, I did ask them about that when we talked about town square. They do, you also could do ground fireworks. You can also do indoor fireworks. It's, it's, it's just what we want to do when we want to do it, and then we can maybe get hone in a little bit more on the 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 costs. But he's very applicable to us doing a show that we can we can perform for for our residents. He's not a company that is going to hold us to the sixty three thousand dollars per show.
Eleanor, would it be possible if this this company could bring us a list of options? I I didn't know what's possible with what they can do.
Certainly, we can, we can offer that. I will indicate this is our busiest time of the year, so if we maybe could look at those options after July fifteenth, he's already got his trucks packed and and moving on to areas that don't have the similar hot zones that we do. So is if that's all right with the commission, I certainly can ask him to present something to us after, like, the tenth or fifteenth of July, if that's okay. Are you looking for one immediately, Commissioner Pincirga?
No, nothing immediate for me, but I just, I'm just curious what the possibilities are. I didn't even know they did light shows, so. But that's good to hear. Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Hay? You have a final comment?
Yeah, just final comment here is that you know, what's the impact if we don't make a decision tonight? Because I I thought I heard you say, Mayor or Eleanor or someone, that we need to make a decision tonight so that we can tell the vendor which way we're going to go, and that's going to impact our costs. Is that, is that, is that true, Eleanor?
Well, what is occurring is he's packing the fireworks now. His his deadline was May fifteenth. I asked him to wait till you know, to the nineteenth, so we could discuss it with the commissioner. He was applicable to that. So I think we owe it to them to give them a decision tonight on if we are not doing our Fourth of July fireworks off the barge. Now.
That's what they needed the decision on tonight is whether or not we're moving forward with the fourth, which we're not at this point. We just need to let them know that.
Right.
We won't lose our sixty three thousand.
Yes, Mayor, other options after that, we certainly are open to discuss with him and utilize those funds, noting that our fiscal year ends on September thirtieth.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
I I just want to comment that I I'm pretty sure most of us are going to be tired at looking at any type of artificial lights after this whole thing. If we can maybe stay away from any artificial light works or anything, I'd rather see a real fireworks show. Just my personal input.
Totally noted.
The real moon.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. We got, we got the 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 question answered on that. And we'll we'll certainly look, bring back some, definitely, you know, this this really puts Eleanor's creativity to to work and coming up a variety of options, and she certainly doesn't like that area to ever disappoint with her tremendous ideas. So we'll certainly be bringing some things back for us to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No pressure, Eleanor. Yeah.
Next, we yeah, next we have proposed resolution number twenty dash zero four three. Approve and authorize implementation of a pilot program by staff when warranted to assist businesses during times of emergency declaration. Do we have a presentation or a?
Mike Mike Rumpf is on standby here to to just talk a little bit about some some ideas that we wanted to spring forward to you know, be able to assist our businesses and obviously during COVID and being able to potentially have additional outdoor seating than what our code normally allows to potentially bring merchandise out onto the curb or in front of their store to provide more opportunity for people to purchase where you're limited on the number of people that can go into a store. This is temporary measures. I'll stop there. And Mike, if if you want to just kind of summarize them for the commission?
Sure. This isn't too unusual from what's happening in other cities. Approaches to it, but these are really some of the basics, particularly to address what few regulations we have on the books that regulate this on a day by day basis. Obviously, it is quickly. We typically regulate the protection of required parking spaces, public walkways, accessible route, accessible parking spaces. And of course, try to prevent between tenants so that seats or merchandise doesn't spread out to adjacent bays. So it relaxes some of those requirements. It's laid out in this real simple strategy. Some of it is just logical prudent type things, some arbitrary, but guesswork in terms of how long, but obviously renewable. We continue to perhaps even modify it if we need to, if we come across things we hadn't considered. But our regulations now allow for outdoor display of merchandise as long as within those zoning districts, it is removed daily. This is that much different, but it would allow for This is that much different, but it would allow for parking spaces in front of the bays to be used. Small tents, which would not require permits, would be part of the simple program. If it's larger than a 10 by 10 pop-up tent or happy, they would have to do the process, the building could would require that. Outdoor seating, it allows if the property owner or management entity allows seats to extend beyond tent space, we will be fine with that. Same thing with in the parking spaces, immediately dividing those spaces or beyond, again, if the management entity allows it. How we do, it's a two-pronged program. You have those strictly on private property, like a shopping center. And you can also have some provisions for the public spaces of rights of way, for example, what few retail tents we have downtown on Ocean Avenue. We allow those seats to be on the rights of way, public spaces and sidewalks in accordance with our cafe seating program, and it would expand that similarly, so if you go outside that. We, of course, require insurance and things like that, and that would have to be followed. We wouldn't want to let that go. So a little bit more strings attached to the public realm aspect of this, but nothing property owner, restaurant operator could not pursue.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Katz?
No, just I appreciate staff's forward thinking to, to plan for these types of things now that, you know, they are a thing in our lifetime to help our businesses in any way we can.
All right, Commissioner Hay?
I think that's a fantastic idea. I just wondered how soon would you start the pilot program? And is there a particular area that you would target?
Now, we have called it a pilot program, not to be geographic specific, but just to be handled on a case by case basis. And of course, through a trial and error type of process. So we'll learn from it, see how it works in this case. We're not so fearful of, you know, some of the typical side effects of doing this and unsightliness, particularly with relieving and letting go of some of the banner and temporary sign rules. Obviously, the benefit to the businesses outweighs perhaps the temporary aesthetic impacts on certain corridors and streets. So it would be citywide.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Romulus.
Mayor, I have no comment at this time.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I very much appreciate this, and I think this is a wonderful idea. And I think this is also a wonderful compromise, because the reality is, whether it's 25% or 50% of people being able to go into restaurants, that's really not enough, especially given all the time that they've been closed. So it's a good compromise to allow them to be outside, put tents up, put their tables up, because by being outside, you know, their air is not the same air that's been circulating around. And you're able to actually distance people that distance the tables and, and make sure that those guidelines, the social distancing guidelines are met while accommodating more customers. This is very much a good thing. But I did, Mike, I did want to ask you about, it's number two, it's the top of the back page. I just want to make sure I understand what's written. It says here, "The Development Department will issue a certificate of acknowledgement of COVID-19 social guidelines upon posting of these applicable guidelines and passing of a site inspection." Could you talk about what that means? Because I, I think what that means is that you're, you know, restaurants can have a voluntary inspection, and we give them a gold star. And hopefully, that will build consumer confidence to say, hey, this is a restaurant that's been inspected by the city. We know that they're doing everything they can and all the guidelines. Is that what that means, or is something else meant by that?
Yes, so that is a benefit of it. Let me explain. The fact provision was added as staff started considering a program that is coming to us to employ temporarily displaced employees in the area to work temporary COVID-related tasks for the city. The personnel agency is called Career Source. And we started envisioning a possible position with the city that would go out and do this basic inspection. And for both public relations and advertising that they are in compliance, we might do that. As we fine tuned what positions we might be able to offer Career Source in the city, it ended up excluding this provision. So at the last minute, it didn't get pulled out. It's probably good to leave it in, in the event that we do something like that. So and also the display of the notice, and I think what we'll do is put these rules on some type of city letterhead. You know, I don't want to use the word certificate, but you know, I mean, something that's recognizable, and they would post this in a visible place. So it does two things. It shows the public that they're, the city has this type of program, and they're following it, and that these tables is being thrown out there. It also advertises it to a fellow business who may not be aware of it. So he sees that there is a formal process to follow, and there is a benefit of doing it and encouraging them, teaching them, contact the city, walk them through it, or they can, you know, learn from their neighboring business. So twofold.
Right. I think that'll be good for building consumer confidence, or at least that would make me feel better if I saw that at a restaurant and knowing that this place was inspected. So
Right.
I commend you all for putting this together. I think it's a fantastic idea. Regarding the career source that you mentioned, I, I, I support you, and I hope that pulls through, because that is a fantastic thing if it happens, so.
Sure. If my mic is still on, I did not answer Commissioner Hay's question. The program is going to start immediately with your, your blessing here. We might, like I said, create these rules that can be headed out and posted in with the label on them. We probably have some administrative details to work out. We've been contacted by one or two businesses asking for such relief. So we're ready to get going.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, one more thing. There's mention of permit fees. Can you talk about, you know, just to be clear, when does someone have to pay and not pay, and how much are they paying?
Well, right now, we only envision the city's involvement if it has to do with the public realm. If it's on city rights of way, public ways, side, public sidewalks. That's when we need to review, and other departments have to review perhaps insurance documents, hold harmless, things like that. And what you might want to inspect, because the public is involved, we might want to inspect, inspect to make sure that there's proper passageways on sidewalks. So it takes a little more step time, but I don't see anything, anything greater than $35 to $50 as far as fee.
Nothing burdensome or prohibitive?
No, correct, correct.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mike, for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike. And no, I'm glad that we're moving forward to help the businesses in the city of Boynton Beach. And if there's no more comments from the board or the commission, I'll take a Lori.
Just one comment. I wanted to, I want to just thank Jim for helping us figure out how to be flexible as a government. Typically, all of these changes would require amendments to our code, and that's a lot of time and a lot of work. And we went to him and said, we need help. We want to be able to do this quickly and be able to respond to our businesses. And, you know, he figured out a way to get it done. We're able to do it through a pilot program under the emergency declaration of the county and the state. So thank you, Jim, for helping us figure out how to get it done, because that's, it's not the easiest thing for government to be so flexible so quickly. So I'm, I'm very proud of us putting this together.
Thank you. And yes, it's, you know, Jim, you're still going to have to be creative, because we're going to probably have to try a little bit more new ideas and new things to get the city going again. So if there's no more comments or questions from the commission, may I have a motion to approve? I got it from Vice Mayor and second by Commissioner Romulus. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any of those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. There is no unfinished business or new business. We are moving on to legal ordinance number 20-016. Jim, would you mind reading?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending and deleting various articles and sections of Part II and Part III of the Code of Ordinances, providing for the creation of a Chapter 27 Advisory Boards and Committees, providing a comprehensive update to city rules governing advisory boards and committees, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
All right. And I'll ask the commission, do you need a presentation?
I'd like just a background. I don't need a full presentation. Just.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll handle that if that's.
All right, appreciate it.
The intent here was, as you've probably noticed, if you've at any time gone to look at what the requirements for board appointees are, meaning either qualifications, the number of people, the selection of chair and vice chair, all those various issues. You have to search all over the code to find those provisions, because over time, they were just placed in different parts of the code. If you go back and look at the historical footnotes associated with the code sections. So this first came up. This was a concept that the city clerk had thought about and talked to me about. And then we went and spoke with the publishers of the code, which is the American Publishing Corporation. And they provided suggestions for consolidating sections of the code. So what we've done is we've moved all the various sections related to boards and committees. And we will now have them in a new Chapter 27, all consolidated in one place, as you see, see fit here. I do want to point out just a few provisions. So we have the, and I'll make reference to the line numbers in the exhibit. We provide for the selection of a chair and vice chair by the city commission. It's an annual reappointment. So much like the rolling over of the position of Vice Mayor at the commission level, this gives the commission the opportunity to look at the individuals that are running the individual boards and be able to look at it on, on an annual basis. Somebody could be reappointed, but the commission would look at it on an annual basis. If you jump to line 181 and 82, we have a provision for the commencement of terms on April the 1st. And then, of course, these are staggered terms. Nobody that is currently on a board would be jeopardized by the adoption of this ordinance. So the rotation process would still continue, but the commission has the authority to look at this now and say, you know, April the 1st is not a convenient time. It's too quick after the elections. Let's move it to a different date. At one point in time years ago, there was a discussion about making the appointments in December. So that's, that's a flexible point that could be adopted tonight or amended on second reading. And those are two-year terms. If you jump to line 216, we have a provision for absenteeism. Six absenteeisms in an annual term of a board member would result in removal by ministerial action of the city clerk. The individual will just get a notice that says you missed seven meetings and you're off the board, then the commission would reappoint somebody, but there's no restriction on reappointing that same person. If the commission was satisfied, there was some compelling reason to do that. That's generally the, the provisions. There is a clarification of something that has always been custom and practice is that board members serve at the pleasure of the city commission. So therefore, even though somebody is appointed, they could be removed at any time as well by majority vote of the commission.
All right, Vice Mayor, do you have any further questions or comments?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none. I'll see if anyone's raised their hand or asked a question. Doesn't look like anyone has. And so I'll take a motion on ordinance number 20-016.
So move.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, then second by Hay. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conserta?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
I didn't hear him.
Commissioner Katz?
I'm going to say. Yeah. Going once.
Probably stepped away.
Going twice. All right.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Vote is 4-0.
All right, thank you. Next item is the relief on the table, the item 12B. And if there's anybody who would like to discuss any of the future agenda items or add one, now would be the time. Or any final, yep.
I did talk to the Florida, the textile company, and we're going to be ready on June 2nd to bring a proposal back. We have been in communication. They've provided some information, so we'll, we'll probably be able to bring that back to you sooner than the 16th.
Perfect.
Next meeting.
All right.
Mayor, I'd just like to request from perhaps the clerk or someone from staff. You have two items here. I just, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and the home-based business regulations. If somebody could forward us a copy of what those are, so we can read them in advance, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay.
We're still waiting for Lake Park. That's why that's been a TBD, because they haven't adopted their, they were going through the process of public hearings and consideration of some changes. So we're monitoring that. They haven't completed that yet. As soon as they do, we'll forward it, and I do have the Wellington information we'll be bringing to you at the next commission meeting instead of the 16th. We'll have that ready for everybody.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no more further comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Aye.
Good night.
And as a reminder, I'll interject here real quick. A recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at www-boyntonbeach.org. This concludes tonight's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's City of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Thank you.